Jacob is from Hancock Associates. He will be presenting the A and R plan along with Marzi, who's also online.
It's very funny, that's a name I grew up with, multiple families with that name and I haven't heard it for years. I was just thinking, I've heard that name for years.
Good to go. Okay, thank you guys. All right, we'll call the April 14th meeting of the Planning Board to order. Starting with petition 25, A and R dash zero two by Town of Swampscott care of Hancock and Associates for a approval not required submission. Marzi, are you leading this or someone else?
Yeah, it'll be my pleasure, excuse me, it'll be my pleasure to be here. Good evening, everybody. We also have Jacob Lemure, our consultant from Hancock Associates, who is here this evening to maybe talk about the technical aspect of the A and R. What I wanted to bring to your attention maybe is just to maybe share some historical, maybe just site information. As you know, the reason for the A and R is to pave the way for creating a parcel of land that will become the veterans' housing, 41 units of veterans' housing. That will be a comprehensive permit. Bene Breth Housing is the developer who will be seeking a comprehensive permit through our zoning board of appeals. And we are here to create the separate lot. A while back, you probably recall, the town has purchased the parcel 1224 Pine Street and we are combining that lot with portion of the eight, 10 Pine Street lot. And the reason for the configuration is that the town also has a lease with the local cannabis that really defines the parcel for that area. So maybe if Jacob, you can walk us through the technical aspect in regards to the zoning compliance, the lot lines and the boundaries.
Yep, this is a pretty straightforward one in terms of compliance where basically we're complying with the regulations and meet the requirements for an A and R. We are combining two existing parcels. One is here, this corner lot at Pine and Erie Street, which also is adjacent to this lot that has the cannabis store and the VFW building now. We'll be removing the existing lot lines, creating one new lot line to encompass that cannabis dispensary parcel. And then one new lot to, for the comprehensive permit project. And we're also, there's a small section of the parcel that sort of extends this way up into Lynn. This is actually, contains a culvert, called the Stacy Brook culvert. And that follows along this easement line, comes up here into Lynn, and then cuts across into Erie Street. This parcel is being proposed as a non-buildable lot. And we're removing that so that we don't have to continue, so that this parcel is not included in the comprehensive permit plan set. Other than that, we've already gone to the Lynn Planning Board who've approved to sign the plan. They still have the physical Mylar. They're waiting for some board members to come in and give signatures. And as soon as that's done, I will bring the Mylar down to Swampscott and work with Marissa and Marzi to get the signatures on that if the Planning Board decides to approve today.
And just to let you know, prior to this meeting, I did have a conversation with the city of Lynn, the assistant to their planning board, and she stated that most likely the Mylar will be signed tomorrow. They need two signatures on it.
Thanks, Marzi. So is the ultimate, if this is approved, going to be one, two, three lots? One with cannabis shop, one with the comprehensive permit where the VFW was and the Pine Street one? And then a third kind of sliver of a lot along the Stacy Brook culvert that goes into Lynn?
Yep, correct.
Got it, okay.
And Chad, obviously the sliver will be marked as a non-buildable parcel, a non-buildable lot?
Yep, okay.
Can you give me a little information? There's a red line on here that it says, "Existing property line to be eliminated." What is that?
If I can just, let me see if I can swap this over here. So if you could see here, this is Erie Street, Pine Street, and New Ocean Street. This parcel here, well actually it might be a little better if I turn on some footage. There we go. So you've got the VFW building right here. This is the cannabis facility. This building here has been demolished and it's basically just a slab at this point. So the lot configuration right now is you've got this large parcel here that contains the sliver that has the culvert on it and also this other sliver.
Oh, I see. So that is part of, that is part of that parcel that the VFW is on. I see.
Yes, yep, correct. And we'll be, we'll be taking a portion of this sliver here into this lot and basically moving this lot line down to where this separation and parking is down here. So you'll have two separate parking areas.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
I have a question. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, so that about 10-foot wide sliver that's behind the Pine Street lot that we were talking about, what is underneath that? It was my understanding that another portion of the culvert was underneath that.
Yes, there's a, so the, there's a culvert that, like a draw in here, comes down like this, splits to the south, splits up to the north along this finger.
Right.
And then also comes out towards Erie Street.
And what you want to do then is to eliminate that, that, the lot line on the, you know, between the Erie Street property and the Pine Street property so that there's one lot line. So in other words, the Pine Street property will now encompass that piece that sits over the culvert?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I have to say I oppose that. I really have a problem with building over the culvert. And I think it's a, you know, how does that kind of impact? Well, why are we including it in the lot line then?
It's, I mean, we do have setback requirements that we can utilize from that lot line. We know where the culvert is and we will be going out, I believe next week, to do some subsurface evaluation to actually get a good location on that culvert. And we'll ensure, we're going to ensure obviously that that culvert is well enough away from the building to not have any structural impact on the building.
Right, because I'm really concerned about liability from anyone's standpoint. It was my understanding that there shouldn't even be heavy equipment sitting on top of it. And I'm concerned about future access. Like, you know, we're aware of it right now, but 15 years from now, is anybody going to, you know, remember if something goes wrong? And we've got like, sort of, you know, mission creep and whatever is going on at that property is now in a place where we can't access a culvert anymore? I mean, I just have concerns about that kind of thing. I think it's a flood zone. It's really important.
So Angela, right now, and Jacob, please confirm or you can let me know, the initial drawings that I have seen, the architectural drawings for the new structure, from the back of the building to the property line, it looks like there's at least 18 feet distance in, like, sort of, that would allow for safe access and to address any impacts onto the culvert.
Okay, I think, well, you know, I'd be comfortable if we had a sign off from the town engineering staff. First of all, you know, I fully support doing this. I don't, I've never had a problem with it. I think so, basically, we're going to, right now, the cannabis shop and the VFW are one huge lot because there is no property line there. So we're putting a property line in to make the cannabis shop its own lot. And then we're getting rid of the lot, the property line between the VFW parcel and the Pine Street parcel. So now we have one big lot, which makes a lot of sense. You know, the unbuildable portion of, of the, you know, that little piece going into Lynn is one thing. I just feel like, you know, I understand that we want to use it for setbacks. I'm just really concerned about it. It looks to me like that building is just feet from that culvert and I'm just worried about it. And why is that building completely on the Pine Street lot? I thought we were talking about moving that building into the center more. I'm not understanding this drawing at all.
So the design has not been completed. This was the latest architectural drawings that the developer had used to submit their project eligibility application to the state. But I think as Jacob pointed out, I think that the other culvert that crosses the parcel, I think that siding the building this way would not impact that cross culvert that crosses the parcel.
Where does that crossing happen?
So if this crossing into this parcel, we will be needing to look at relocating a portion of that. And that's basically right here, dead center between the two sites. So irregardless of where the building was placed, or how far we slid it, this way, we would, I think irregardless of that, we're going to be dealing with the impacts to that section of the culvert.
So that, that, that dashed line with the squares on it, that is marking the actual culvert?
No, that's, that's a fence line. So the culvert's shown approximately. It's not on this plan. So we haven't, you know, we're still in design phase, so we haven't completed the stormwater design. But essentially, the culvert comes down right here on this dashed line beneath.
Oh, the dashed line is to the right of the fence line?
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
And this has been all signed off on by our engineering staff as if this is a good idea, right?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, did you say that the town engineer has looked at this and given approval from his perspective, Marzi?
Yes, Gino has. And I'm just trying to see if I can get him to join us on this meeting.
So, and, you know, I guess I'm really thrown by seeing this building sitting on this Pine Street lot with a parking lot on top of the VFW, this being a latest submission. Which I personally will not sign anything that looks like this. I don't care if it's an A and R or whatever it is. Because this is exactly what we said we did not want to do. So I'm, you know, I'm sorry. It just, this is kind of shocking to me.
Marzi, from a, from a process perspective, what's, where are we in the process of this longer-term project? And what does the A and R play into that? For instance, if we needed to table this for a month, does that, how does that impact what you guys are working on?
So, so it will impact the, the project, or at least impact the land disposition agreement. As part of the LDA, we are required to, to do the parcel, sort of, combine the parcels by April 18th.
Okay.
You know, but why is this building all on one parcel? I mean, I just, I can't believe what I'm looking at. I didn't, you know, personally, I didn't vote at town meeting to spend $1.7 million of ARF funds after we just, you know, had a, you know, had to give variances on a 21-unit project to put this massive building all on one lot, which has been part of an ongoing argument for a long time. You know, with, between the select board members, you know, a point of debate, I should say. And, you know, I'm just, I'm just a little horrified seeing this building sitting there at the edge of, all by itself there. It's basically on, just on the Pine Street lot.
Yeah, I, I mean, in regards to the, the final design, Angela, it's, there's a, there is a process that's similar that, that we have done with, with the Mashon in regards to the town be able to review the schematic plans. So, and again, these are the plans that were submitted to the state right now with the application. Ultimately, I'm not sure if you can, you know, can we move the building over towards, you know, closer towards New Ocean Street and then create parking on closer to Erie Street and then surrounding? Is that something that, that you're proposing? Or, you know, you have other, other ideas for the, for the redevelopment site?
I'm not, I'm going to tell you what my understanding was, is that the building is going to be sited, sort of, you know, more mid-site and that the parking would be underneath and some around it. And that the building would only end up being three and a half stories and not whatever this is here with, you know, I'm guessing that there's going to be some spots underneath and a five, you know, a four or five-story building once we have to clear the floodplain.
So this, this building or the current proposal does not account or does not show or render any parking spaces under the building? It's all only on surface parking on, on, on the lot that's shown?
So is this the, the new answer to not having such a, you know, only having a four-story building there? When we, that's not what we promised the neighbors? I mean, this is just going back and forth. This is like an insane thing.
The, the plan...
Jacob, can you show the rendering to Angela so we can see? Because it's really three stories, Angela, I think. Do you have the, do you have the rendering that you can?
I don't have the architectural renderings handy with me.
Why wouldn't we just push it over on the, the VFW lot? Where you're halfway out of the flood zone and you're not right on top of all these neighbors. It's, it's not so egregious a building. I'm, I'm sorry to have, you know.
No, 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 I mean, listen, I, I think, I think...
You know what my concern is, Marzi, is that we're going to sign an A and R and that's going to be de facto, oh, the planning board saw that. They saw it. They signed the A and R. And then we're not going to hear about it again because it's a 40B and it's going to go directly to the zoning board of appeals. So I'm not comfortable with it because I don't think there's any stopgap anywhere.
I was going to ask...
There's, there's two different, maybe, I, I'm seeing it as two different issues, right? The first one is really establishing the, the new lot lines or removing the existing lots line, lot lines. And the other one is the placement of the design of the building. In regards to the, to the design of the building, the LDA governs or allows the town to go back and negotiate with the developer on the design of the structure and the, the architectural drawings and all those schematic drawings. So there's still an opportunity to talk about that. I understand your point. I, I hear your concern. You know, I just did receive a text from Gino. He stated that he is supportive of the project. He is at the finance committee meeting today, so he's not able to, to join, to join the planning board.
Okay, thanks.
And this is going to be ultimately done through a friendly 40B permit, I'm assuming?
That's correct, yes.
I don't know who it's friendly to, but...
I'm trying to see if I can find...
This is like a complete nightmare for these poor neighbors. And it's not at all what we've been going, the process we've been going through. So I'm just, I'm just really alarmed to see it, I have to say. You know, as far as the A and R goes, I don't have a problem with it. I have a problem with this. And therefore, I'm not comfortable putting my name on something that just can be misconstrued as I'm okay with it.
Is it, would it be helpful if I, if I look for the, for a copy of the rendering so you can see what the structure looks like?
I don't think that would hurt.
Yeah, I could take a look. Stop.
So while you're looking for that, I don't quite understand the slivers and what their purpose is or why they were left there and where they're going after this whole thing happens. So it was clear that the Pine Street lot, let's call it Pine Street lot, that's what people are referring to, that was left out of that for some reason. The culvert was left on the property.
I think that was for the town to remain owner so it would have access. My question dovetailing from that, though, why are we not having the other culvert that runs from Erie Street down, Erie Street South, I should say? Why isn't that being included in that municipal parcel?
What's the reason for not connecting it?
Right.
Because where is ending up with that? So the town will still own the property. So the property over the culvert will still be town-owned, right?
All of this will still be, all of this will be...
But specifically the sliver over the, over the culvert. And it appears as though when they broke off the Pine Street lot, then that was the attempt, right? To keep that under town control. So that'll still be there. But then the sliver that goes off into Lynn, I just don't understand why that's discontinuous from that? Why wouldn't that also stay in the, under the control of the same lot?
So this is, the town will always, this is going to be a 99-year lease. So the town will own the, the land underneath. We'll have a, a long-term lease with the, with Bene Breth Housing.
Right, then what is the reason why we're duck, creating a new lot with that little dovetail that goes into Lynn? I understand the culvert runs below it, but...
Basically, just having this secondary parcel here going into Lynn as part of the primary parcel complicates the 40B filing and I believe also the, the insurer's documents. So there's legal reasons and, you know, practical reasons for cutting that thing off of there.
Okay, and the reason, yeah, but the reason to, to, to absorb the other one, the one that goes between the building and the neighbors at Erie Street, the reason to absorb that one is strictly to give the building the setback dimensional stuff that it needs. Is that correct?
Right, yes.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I don't want to do that personally. The rest of the board can, I'm only one member, so I, I think that those, those, those particular strips of land were left not built upon for a reason and it's access to the culvert. We're, you know, currently under, you know, multi-million dollar consent decree for, you know, water coming out of Stacy's Brook. And why we're messing with stuff like that, just, it blows my mind. But I also don't understand why they wouldn't even take that exact building. Why is this building pushed all the way out to the corner? Why wouldn't it be drawn down more and, and take some of the burden off those properties? The neighboring properties. I just don't understand it, so...
So, so Marissa or Jacob, can I just share? I just want to show you the image. Are you able to see this?
I can see it just fine, yeah, thanks.
Okay, so this is, so Angela, so this is what the proposed building, the new building would look like. So you can see the, the three-story structure and, you know, so you're, you're basically standing on New Ocean and Pine and you're looking down towards, towards Erie Street.
Right.
So this is the, the image of the structure.
So you've got, and now, so we're looking at a building that's, because you've got five feet, that's bringing it up from the baseline, plus you've got about 11 feet per floor. So that's 33 and then you've got another, you know, 10 feet on top just for the utilities and so forth. So 43, so you've got about a 48-foot building, roughly. If my calculations are correct, maybe it's even taller.
I think your calculations are slightly over because you've got 11 per floor. Just looking at the number of steps in this, now Brandon, this is a rendering, so there's sometimes inaccuracies. But if those are seven-inch steps, it's about 14, 20, well, it's, it's, it's under three feet up on this left end, but you'll notice that there's a slope upward. So you're looking at the three floors themselves are taking to, to about 33 feet on the far end that would be against Erie and then...
Oh, don't push it, okay. Oh, there we go. I was turning off my mic.
So that, that end that's, you know, on the left closest, the, the one that's elevated slightly, that's where you have a 10 to 11-foot baseline. So you're under the flood zone. You have to be at 14, okay, minimally. So the free board has to clear 14 feet. So, you know, I think it, you know, it's, I think it's minimized a bit here. Unless they're building some kind of a plith underneath it, that's going to elevate the whole thing. So, I mean, I'm just throwing it out there because that's what, it, it looks like it's going to end up being to me.
So can we go back to the, the previous drawing? Because I just wanted to see if we can address your concern with the, Jacob, can you bring up the other, the other rendering that shows the parcel?
Yeah. It's this one you're talking about?
Yes, so you can just bring up, so Angela, on this, if we were to, to, you can see the, the red lines that Joe mentioned that are shown in here. So if we were to, to create the new parcel line that would begin with the, with the red line sort of as is existing and then keep... as is existing and then keep the remaining land sort of out of this parcel, but I just, but, but I still, just kinda, my thought process is that although it's a different parcel, the town is still the owner of the land.
But you're, I, but you're sugge, right, I understand what you mean, but, um, I mean essentially, I get it, it just lets that building be that much closer, which would, would not be such an issue if the building were pushed down into the other lot, like, I'm not understanding the placement of this structure, I just don't get it. It's in the worst possible place on this entire lot. Where it's pinchy, where you get a pinch point with the culvert, you, you're gonna go over that one portion of it no matter what you do, but you've got, you know, you've got this huge parking lot sitting there. You know, why, why are we putting in this huge impermeable surface? It's just, it's crazy, in a flood zone, it's, I don't get it. Um, at any rate, I understand that, you know, so, in terms of setback, so, you know, because it abuts, it's a commercial building, regardless of the fact that it's residential because it's so big, it's commercial. It's a commercial building and it's abutting a residential zone, so it, you have to have a 10-foot buffer, there's no, I don't think that the zoning board of appeals has the authority to give relief on that part of it. I could be wrong, I just don't think that they can, cause they're literally being variance territory, maybe they can, um, I don't know.
Question-
So, I'm sorry, I just, so right now I think the, the buffer is about 18, is it 18, Jacob, can you please confirm?
Yeah, it's 18.
From what to what, to the property edge or?
To the property line.
Okay.
If we're doing this through a 40B permit, what's the necessity of being compliant on the setback? If this is ultimately gonna be, go through the ZBA with 40B?
Yeah, good question, I mean, I, I thought that they had to have, um, a certain amount of, uh, distance from that property line with the residential zone.
Well, they, they can seek a waiver, right?
But nobody can really explain why the building's on, like, cramped onto one lot, I guess that's my, I'm just scratching my head over that.
I mean, if it was moved-
I don't get it.
So you're suggesting Angela is to move it further south and-
Like, why bother combining the lots? Just say one lot's parking, one lot's a building, I mean, it's just, I guess, I, I, never mind, I get it, you have to do it for the, the comprehensive permit, I, I get it, so-
But the building, the way that it's, 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 um, sighted right now with the sizes, the size of the building would not fit on either one of the lots, right? So would, it would have to be like in the center of, between the two lots, or, you know?
What's wrong with that? Being in the center of the two lots, have parking surrounding it, I mean, you're taking a tremendous burden off the corner there.
I think that's the motivation for combining the lots, right? So you can center it.
Exactly, I mean, we didn't, we didn't like, you know, otherwise why bother, right? I mean, it just-
So if you were to look at this drawing, there's really no motivation other than parking to tear down the existing lodge, right? You could, it's, it's untouched in this drawing, the building is completely separate from that lot. I know we're not here to talk about the building or the lots, uh, we're only here to talk about the lots, but it does seem that you could reduce the height on the Pine Street side by adding underground parking on the left side with the second floor that comes off the top of the third floor there, be a little bit more creative with the use of the space. That would kinda be a win-win for both neighbors and developer.
I'm happy to take that back, to take your, your, your recommendations or suggestions back, um, and again, there will still be a, a time, an opportunity, um, to, you know, to comment and provide feedback on the renderings once they're finalized.
I'm, I'm gonna ask a, a couple of quick questions and I, my fear in here is the fact that without the architect present, um, I don't know if there's anyone that can answer this. In just looking on my phone at the streetscape, the placement of this building does not appear to also take into account the distance from the street of the adjacent buildings that are on Erie, so the, sort of the yards come down and then this building juts out, um, and I think it would be really helpful to see if the, the movement of this building at least could address so that, that we maintained a steady, all the, all the houses that are on the same side of Erie Street as this proposal, um, they are aligned, the front facades align the whole way down, and I think that though there's a turn there, it would be very obvious for the, the upper right-hand corner of this building to be in alignment with those buildings, um, just so that it felt like it was part of the neighborhood, um, and that would not, I don't think it would be moving the building more than 10 or, 10 or 15 feet, uh, towards the cannabis dispensary. And I think that alone as a gesture would make more sense, um, as to how this is reflecting the fabric of the neighborhood.
But if you were to move the, the building 10 feet, would you be able to create any parking spaces on that end? Because parking is, is a concern to the neighbors and, and for this project. So if we were to shift the building, what does that mean for parking?
I think it might mean losing, in looking how this building is placed, it might mean losing one or two spots total, um, and I think, but I think at the same time that balance, um, it would allow their street, like when this was built, um, it would allow it to actually feel contextual, and for losing one or two spaces, it might be something worth, um, worth feedback from the community.
What's the, how many spaces are proposed here? And it's 40 units, residential units in the building?
We've got, uh, 42 spaces.
Okay.
And why don't they go underneath?
Um, cost of construction and just the, the height of the building.
Right, and then we're in the flood zone, you know, if we're gonna go down, uh, that creates issues with having a pit in the flood zone, and if we wanted to have parking raised above the flood zone, obviously that would leave, that would at least be one additional story of height.
It would be one story over the left-hand lot that has no stories on it now, and then you could remove some of the bulk and the mass from the right-hand side of the lot and have the same interior square footage. I think, hey, I don't have a solution here, and again, we're not here to talk about the buildings, but I do see Angela's point in looking at this drawing, it is a little surprising.
Yeah, well, again, I'm happy to take the, uh, these comments back to the design team, maybe it would be helpful to have a written letter of comments that could be brought up during the, uh, 40B process. I, I mean, I would, I, I'll be, we're, we're still at this point in the design, we're not in final design stages and there are still a lot of decisions that haven't been made yet, I don't know if, you know, I'm prepared or this is the appropriate place to go too deeply into sort of the site design. I think it's important, irregardless of where we're gonna place this building, that we get, that we, we need that, the space on the site either for parking or for structure to make the site work either way. Irregardless of where we place this building, closer or further away from the street, you know, we're, we're gonna need to take up as much space available here to provide adequate parking and, you know, landscaping and try to make the building fit in with the neighborhood, so, you know, we're, we're gonna be submitting much more complete documents once we get in, past the, uh, project eligibility filing and into the 40B definitive sub, I mean, definitive permit filing, um, so there'll be updated plans above and beyond these plans that can certainly, again, I can consider, will consider the planning board's comments and, and, uh, again, it'd be great if I could get maybe a written, uh, list of comments from the planning board or just the planning board members individually if that's what they prefer, but, um, I think that would be the best way for me to be able to give these comments an impact on the project.
And I'm also happy to schedule a, a, a meeting with the architect and with the, uh, with the development team, even maybe before we advance, before they did, they advanced the design.
I think that would be great.
You know, this is, this is such a grotesque departure of what we were led to believe, even o- over this last past town meeting where there was vigorous debate about, you know, what, I mean, why bother moving the, you know, I mean, the, 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 you, you're basically just taking down the, the VFW just, you know, for parking spaces now, I mean, and, and here we're going through all this trouble and tremendous expense to rebuild a VFW, just to have this, you know, after all this, after all, you know, the years of like 21 units that were gonna be on that exact same spot, that, you know, basically only squeaked by with, uh, two and a half stories with a variance and, you know, neighbors are very upset and it turns out these guys couldn't finance it anyways and they went ahead and sold it and the town was, you know, my estimation, you know, I don't know, well, anyway, I, the town bought it and, um, and now to put twice as many units on the same spot, it looks like there's, how many feet between the, that, the corner of that building and, and the, and the sidewalk? I, it looks like there's barely like two feet or something, it's crazy looking, five, you know, four feet? And I'd like to see something where, you know, the, with this, these, this poor woman who lives next door who's been to every single meeting over the past four years, five years maybe, since we've been talking about this lot. It's just crazy that people just get, um, pushed aside, I guess, I, I just can't get over it. It's, um, just driving an agenda that doesn't work, so, whatever. I mean, uh, I understand, you know, the, I think the veterans' housing is an excellent idea, I just don't understand why we have this monstrosity of a lot and we have to jam that building over there. If it wasn't central, there could be parking on both sides of it, wouldn't that be easier for people that live way over on the right-hand side, the Erie corner, and they have to park way over by the, the, you know, dispensary? I mean, I don't know, it seems like it would be a better looking building and, um-
I would, I would be concerned about it being pushed too far in that other direction, I mean, as a residential building, it's nice for it to be away from the, through traffic of 1A.
Yeah.
And the other thing is, I, I'm not-
But it's a commercial building, I'm just kidding.
I'm not positive that a parking lot is a gifted gesture to, you know, an active parking lot. I don't, I don't necessarily think, I think if the building were moved slightly and we found a way for the parking to remain down away from the other houses, there's far less disruption with cars coming and going and headlights coming in and out of people's houses, uh, where this is currently suggested. So I do see some logic in it, I do think it's too far toward Erie Street and not following, uh, one of the problems that we have in Swambskett is that there is not, there is not zoning that is logical when it comes to setbacks, um, so we sort of have these numbers, but they don't relate to the built structures, um, in site by site. So I think that being analyzed in this building, I think if this building was sensitively placed, um, it could go a long way, and I think it's an adjustment from the plan that we're seeing right now.
Tying this back to the A and R, I, I understand we have, the town has until the 18th, right, to get this A and R signed off on from Swambskett now since Lynn's already signed off on it.
It's Friday.
That's Friday, right. I have no problem with the A and R itself, with that being said, you've, and Marzie, you always do this, so, I, I know I don't have to say it again, I, you, I think there's a lot of very, uh, critical response to what we've seen tonight for the plan and the uneasiness since this is gonna go through the 40B process of us pretty much never seeing this project again, um, whereas if it were not a 40B project, we would be much more thoroughly consulted, um, if it were a private, you know, applicant, um, is really unnerving, especially for a project that's gotten this much scrutiny, um, over the last three years, I would say, um, and even the year before that when we approved the 21 units by a three to two vote. So I have no problem with the A and R, I just, and I wanna keep on timeline, I don't wanna push anything back that we don't need to do, but with that being said, I really would want to find a way to have representatives of this board or this board involved in some way to help address some of the concerns that Angela and Jer brought up, cause I, I agree with both of their comments and I, I really don't think we're doing our jobs as, as the planning board, whether we're supposed to be involved in the 40B project or not, I don't think we're doing our jobs well if we don't provide that critique and try and get the best of this project like we would any other project. So I am fine with approving the A and R tonight, me personally, um, but I really wanna think critically about how we can be most involved moving forward, uh, in order to make the best project on behalf of the town and whoever ultimately lives there, and especially with the neighbors who've gone through a lot.
Right, I mean, the, we don't have to, we can't, we don't approve an A and R anyways, we just endorse it.
Yeah.
It's, um, that's the whole point, it's approval not required, right?
Right.
Because they're making lots that they can, you know, legitimately make, um, because their frontage exists, blah, 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 but, um, you know, this is, um, so, yeah, I agree, I, what I don't, what I don't agree with is including that strip, um, of that little, you know, uh, culvert passageway, including that in the lot, um, so I would, you know, I, I would not choose to endorse it, but I wouldn't, um, you know, and I'm happy to put my own comments on why, um, but it doesn't mean that, you know, the rest of the board can do whatever they'd like. I mean, and again, we're just voting to endorse the plan and then we sign the-
I sort of feel, um, from the standpoint of if we are including the culvert that runs from Erie Street, um, for the point of meeting setbacks, I can see the reasoning behind that. One of the things that I'm hopeful for in all of this is, you know, we do have documentation in front of us that's showing culverts in both of these situations, I know that, uh, Mr. Lemieux had mentioned the fact that they will be looking at relocation of, um, where Stacy Brook comes through the building, um, and I just think that with this being a 99-year lease, that it's remaining town-owned, um, and I would hope is thoroughly documented, so as we move over the next century, that the, the culverts are attended to, and I think because they're, they would remain either way on town property, um, I don't fully see, um, a major conflict in including that, that piece because of the fact that it's not something that could be sold off or, or built upon, um, based on it being within the setback.
Were the legal reasons, you, you had mentioned there were legal reasons why we wanted to, that, uh, portion of the parcel that goes into Lynn removed, legal and financial reasons, and I, I get that, was that more because it went into a separate, uh, an additional municipality? Or were there other-
Yeah, that's a part of it, uh, was filing the 40B in a dual municipality parcel when such a small portion of that parcel was, you know, obviously not even a functional portion of the parcels in Lynn.
So if, if that parcel ended right at the municipal line, the city line with Lynn, and it was entirely in Swambskett, this would probably all be on one parcel, is that right?
Yeah, probably, yes.
Okay.
I mean, I'd be comfortable with taking that, you know, that strip that's in Lynn, combining it with that strip behind the building and saying that that's the separate lot, um, that it's a non, an unbuildable lot that's separate and combining then the Pine Street lot and the Ocean Ave lot, but, um, I feel like, you know, we, we say this now, we're all like, oh yeah, well, you know, it was gonna be 18 feet and I think, you know, it's, it's fine until you decide when the building's going up and you're like, God, you know, we need some of this room, we need to push this building back, or something happens and you need, it needs, and it, it moves back, and you can because you're still kinda safe in this setback and you don't need permission from anybody, so I just, and I don't think it's, this stuff just happens because it's a big, it's a big, for this area, it's a big commercial building, and, and stuff happens, I mean, we all know it, it's not like anyone's, you know, planning it and trying to be sneaky about it or has evil intent, but stuff happens, and I just don't think it's a good idea to combine what the, what overlays the culvert with the, this lot, I just don't. So, you know, I've already been clear about my opposition to it, so, I'm sorry, I mean, I really didn't wanna be difficult about it.
Is amending that even po- still possible at this point, or is that something that is not feasible on our current timeline?
Well, you know, if Lynn already looked at it, that's the problem.
That's correct. Lynn, Lynn approved it and they reviewed it, um, on the eighth. So we'd have to go back, whatever the amendments that we make here, we'd have to go back to them again.
Yeah.
Unless we just, unless we don't, and we're just saying it's the portion of that lot that's in Swambskot that we're, you know, combining with the other little sliver. I mean, we're not affecting, you know, I, but I suppose it's the whole lot that's, I don't know.
Well, if the point is,
I'm sorry to be the monkey wrench here. I just, you know.
Well, no, Angela, your point, if, if the point is just to create separate lots with the culverts entirely on them, you could create
Right.
an additional lot that bisects the one that Lynn already approved and that's shown here.
Right.
Then this would not have to go back to Lynn, cause there's no portion of the project that would be impacted at that point. Just thinking aloud for process-wise.
Right. I think what we're saying, um, is, is Jacob, is that we're opposed to adding the culvert strip to the Pine Street lot. That, you know, it's forty B. They're gonna get, you know, if they're gonna get relief for that, I mean, look at where the, look where the property line is, especially on the Erie Street side. If they're gonna get relief, they're gonna get relief. You know what I mean? So I, I just don't think it's, I, I, yeah, I just don't think it's a good idea to make that part of the lot. It was never part of the lot for a reason.
I would defer to the engineering department on, I mean, I would say, if I understand your concerns, and again, I agree with Marzi and my thought on it is, you know, it's a DPW structure. If the DPW wants to deal with it a certain way, we're happy to do that. I don't know that modifying the A and R is feasible at this point in the timeline that we're at. But we could certainly look into maybe, I mean, there's not, we can't do an easement, right, because it's owned by the town already, so access, I, I just don't see the practical reason for separating it in that way. It would just be detrimental to the setbacks and require additional relief.
Yeah, it, I don't think so. I don't think it's gonna, honestly, you should see, you know, the other forty Bs like this that have been put up. I mean, no.
Let me ask a quick question, just to make sure that I do understand what we're talking about. Before the town bought the property, that piece of land that is where the culvert is running from Erie Street, and then the other that is the Stacy Brook that runs over to the Lynn line, that was town-owned property, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So we're, we're basically, we have bought private property that's adjacent to town-owned property.
Right.
That's correct.
So what we're looking at is if we were to combine those into this.
Makes it a bigger lot.
It makes it a bigger lot, but it's all owned together. And we are not selling this. It's a leased property that's a hundred-year or ninety-nine-year lease. Is there risk if we combine these that the town might sell and then sell, like if they went to sell the property that this housing unit is on for some reason, is there any reason that that would create a problem? Well, it, the culvert is gonna be under the building or going around the building through the lot anyway, which would be an easement of sorts if they had to give it, if it became privately owned.
Not to interrupt, but I just wanted to point out that with the culvert, we've also got going through portion of the lot here, a Calix lot as well. So I don't know if, uh,
I'm sorry, going through what lot?
So this, this red line here, the culvert also comes from, uh, this, this direction with Curry Circle runs under the Calix lot, which is the dispensary.
Oh, okay.
And under, under this portion of the lot, sorta splits off at this three separate branches here, so. We, if we were to cut that, these two parcels out, then we would just kind of be separating these two portions of the culvert from the remaining portions of the culvert, but we'd still have the same, sort of, same sort of issue. I don't, I don't know that that would.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, it's curious to me how like we, I mean, again, you know, as you point out, and rightly so, we're not talking about the building right now, but we are talking about dividing up the lots and what that means to some, you know, major infrastructure in the town. So my feeling is like, what's gonna happen, like if, with, so, so who's, who's responsible for moving culverts underneath this property? Who's taking on that risk?
So be the developer and with, with the town, uh, together.
And so we're, and we're willing to take on that kind of risk? I guess we are. I don't know what, you know, if the people are, you know, are aware of that, um.
Well, I think that, that's not the financial, um, aspect of it, Angela. I think that if we can secure some, uh, some grant funding or other funds to be able to relocate the, the culvert, then yes, the town is, is, um, is a partner with the developer. Uh, but other than that, it would be all on the developer to, to relocate it, the, the culvert.
Yeah. Geez, and if anything happened, well, I guess it, yeah, if anything ever happened to it in the future, like, you know, I don't know what kind of access there is, but that's another issue. Uh, you know, it, it, I guess it's disturbing that there's never been a building on top of it since it was built, which goes way back. And it's just, you know, and all these other really old houses around it going into, towards Lynn have been there, you know, and, and nobody ever built over it and, or tried to. It's always been kind of set aside and I just, um, I just don't, um, I, I just don't understand these kind of decisions, but.
So is it all, is it all covered or is it open?
Part of it?
It's, um,
Covered, covered over?
Oh, covered.
It's covered, yep. But it's never really been an issue because there, nothing's set on top of it.
Right.
Well, it's gonna be fourteen cars on top of it in this left photo.
Right, which isn't the same as, as like, you know, as a, as a four-story building and all kinds of heavy construction equipment, you know, in and out, in and out, staging and all that kind of thing, which, you know, it's, it's, you know, of course, that's what they need to do. I mean, it's a big building. Anyway, that's, we're not talking about the building. I'm, I'm really just concerned about what this, you know, does to the, to the underground, so, um, and I'm not an engineer. It's just, uh, an uncomfortable feeling that I have about it and from what I know about the problems that the town is having with the culvert, it's, you know, um, I draw, obviously, sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead, Angela. What were you saying?
No, 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 I'm, I'm done, Marissa. Go ahead.
I, I, this might be a silly question, but isn't it the case that when contiguous lots are held in common ownership, then they're all viewed as one giant lot before, when it comes before?
Talking about the merger doctrine.
Sorry?
I said, I think you're talking about the merger doctrine.
Correct, so.
If there are two non-compliant lots held in common ownership, I'm not sure that, uh, that applies to municipally-owned parcels.
Okay, just privately owned.
Right, and they're not non-compliant, actually. They're both compliant lots, which is why they can do an A and R.
Got it.
Well, actually, not necessarily, but this, they all, they both, they all have adequate frontage on a, you know, on a street, so that's all really, all they need. Um, okay, so I'm gonna just, you know, I think I've made myself very obvious, you know, I've said everything I have to say, so I'm just gonna step out of it now. And, um,
I'm looking at the GIS and according to the GIS, the building that was demolished was on top of the culvert.
Yeah, we've, um, we've gone out and located that. The GIS is just a,
Is it wrong?
Not, yeah, it's, it's just a little bit off.
Okay.
Yeah. If, if you go out there, Jer, you can see, because of the, sort of the padding and the footprint is kinda there, at least, so.
Or just the angle they took the picture at.
Yeah, so, yeah, probably. I, I don't think it was sitting on top of it.
Very good.
No.
So, process-wise, this is, I think, my only, my second A and R. We don't need to vote on this. We'll just need to go sign a Mylar for those of us who are.
Well, you, all we do is we, um, you make a motion to, to endorse the plan. And then we vote on the endorsement because they don't need an approval. Because the, the lots already can stand on their own, so everything that they're doing is, you know, they're all lawful lots. You know, they have the correct frontage and so forth. So, um, if we did nothing, this thing would automatically approve itself, you know, I forget how many days.
Right.
So that just, that's how it happens. Um, my issue is, is, you know, is, it's just kind of, it's a real fundamental one. I don't have a problem with doing the A and R. I have a problem with what's gonna happen with, you know, the issue with these culverts and what, you know, and I, I get what, you know, it makes perfect sense to someone who wants to put a building there. It doesn't, um, it just doesn't make sense to me, so.
Does the LDA require or say that the, the, uh, A and R will be endorsed by the planning board, is, to Angela's point, it does automatically go through regardless of our endorsement or not?
I forget how many days.
What, is that Marzi?
I'm sorry, Marzi, what did you say?
No, I was just gonna say the, that the LDA, um, tells that we need to sort of address the, the parcel, um, lines by April eighteenth. But it doesn't give reference that, you know, like the, it doesn't separate the town versus the, um, um, the planning board.
Okay.
Okay.
I forget how many days it is, but, um.
April eighteenth is Friday.
No, I know. I meant, um, like when it just kind of, you know, uh, by default, it just is granted, um, you know, what I'm saying. It just becomes a lot. I forget when that is. I'm not gonna look it up right now. It doesn't matter.
Just to take a poll of other members of the board, how are?
Before we do that, Ted, is there anything in our planning board rules that, uh, I guess I'll call it charter, but not town charter, planning board, uh, charter that requires us to do a checklist, or are there any other things that we need to be attentive to that might, uh, impact the decision?
With A and Rs, I don't believe so. No, correct me if I'm wrong, Angela, right?
Area.
No, I think, yeah, I think you're correct, Marissa. I don't think that there's anything other than the fact that the lot exists with adequate frontage on a street.
Right.
So, so no, there's nothing else. There's nothing else wrong with this A and R. There, nothing, except for my, my objection is, is to the, is, you know, I, you know, obviously where the building is, but it's all also can, including that strip of culvert into this lot, because I think, like we all just talked about, twenty-five years from now, you know, something else could happen or, you know, they could come back and need to, I, I, who knows? It's just some, it just, I, I just don't, you know, I, I don't think it's a good move. I also don't think that it's fair to the neighbors. I mean, you know, you know, they can't expand their lot. They can't move their, their houses like right up to as close as it can get and this thing's gonna sit on, you know, it's gonna be just looming right on top of it.
So Angela, if the design was different, if the, if the developer is able to shift the building as Jer suggested by ten feet away from Erie Street, you know, it'll be interesting to see how that might impact the parking. Is that something that would be, you would find a little bit more acceptable, acceptable at all?
Yeah, I, I would. If it, if it didn't look like it was, again, but we did not vote on at town meeting, which is to jam this twice the size of a building that shouldn't have been there in the first place onto one lot. And, um, which is, you know, it, look, it, it's a nicely designed, you know, it's whatever. I'm not commenting on the building at all, but I'd feel better about that and just, you know, having something that was some kind of a, uh, you know, I'm very uncomfortable in, including the culvert in the lot. Um, even though it's owned by the town, it's no longer sort of protected. It's no, and now it's part of the lot. Anything, I mean, they could plant trees on top of it. They could do anything. Um, but if, I mean, you know, anything could happen over the next many years, so I just, um, you know, maybe I, maybe I'd feel better if I had a, you know, thorough discussion with, uh, an engineer, you know, from the town who can, you know, who, who has some kind of a guarantee or we have, you know, we're holding some sort of a bond that protects us. I can't even imagine what that would be.
I'm happy to arrange a meeting, kinda as a follow-up with, with Gino. Unfortunately, he was not able to be here today, but he is in full support of the plan as, as provided. In regards to the design of the building, I am happy to arrange if, if the planning board would choose to, maybe designate, you know, two board members that we can meet with the architect team for, or the architects for the developer to maybe discuss the placement of the building. That would be something that I'm happy to, to arrange and see how we can, um, in, you know, impact the design or the sighting of the building on this lot.
Yeah, I, I think that's a, that's a, that's, um, you know, thank you. I think that's a very, um, good idea and a generous idea. At the same time, I don't, I can't speak for the rest of the board. I mean, I've, you know, I've been very vocal about it, but I'm, you know, by myself, my opinion doesn't matter. So everyone else, you know, needs to do what they think is important in terms of, you know, a- again, there's nothing wrong with the, with the A and R in my mind, except for the fact that I, I wish it didn't include that piece of the culvert. Otherwise, I have no problem with it. You know, what's gonna happen with the building is gonna happen with the building regardless of what happens with this A and R. I don't know what we have. I mean, I know that, you know, the people that are building this do not care if it sits in a pond of water. They don't care about flood zones. They don't, I mean, they've made it very clear. They don't care. So, you know, if we don't care, then, you know, we're, you know, we just create a, a bad situation. But at any rate, that's, again, a separate issue, so.
So I'm gonna make a motion in a minute. Well, I'm not gonna make a motion, but I would entertain a motion in a moment if someone would like to make one, but I do think, you know, I do echo Angela's concerns about the building placement entirely, as I mentioned before, so I think it's, uh, I think it would be helpful, Marzi, to, and Angela, if you'd like to do this or Jer, I'm happy to, if there's any subgroup of the planning board that would be willing to sit down with you, Marzi, and the architects or the project team or whomever to express some of that, um, constructive criticism, I think that'll only result, hopefully, in a better project. Like I mentioned before, that I think we can.
Yeah, here's something that I don't know, and, and I, I, I know that I've never read it in the A and R bylaw, so I'd need some kind of a, I'd need some sort of an expert, you know, maybe from the state to tell me. I mean, is it, is it possible to, to grant an A and R, for example, and say, or, you know, endorse an A and R essentially that says with the, you know, like giving it a condition? And I, I,
No, you can't condition an A and R.
You can't condition an A and R, right? Okay. I'm sure that's, I, I'm quite sure you are one hundred percent right about that.
One of, one of the things that I, in analyzing this, I might feel opposed to attaching that section that has the culvert from Erie Street if it wasn't strictly a culvert from Erie Street and it was Stacy Brook. Because this is basically a sewer line, this does not cause me the type, type of alarm because I can think of a number of places, including, you know, my own home. The sewer lines run through a private lot that's owned by the neighbors. Um, it does not run down the easement that our driveway comes back because there are two houses behind a, a house where, where we have no street frontage. And I sort of feel with this all being maintained as town land, um, and that this is a culvert, it is not Stacy Brook, um, the amount of the, what it is trafficking in fluid and, and so forth, I, I really feel that this is not where I would be alarmed, I might have a very different attitude if this was actually Stacy Brook running through there, but this is, this is a culvert that's coming up from, I'm assuming from draining Erie Street um, at that corner. So I, I, I'm, I'm just thinking of, of, um, multiple locations that
Yeah.
we have these culverts in town that are, are going through properties. Um, so I, I, I am not as alarmed by that. Also, when looking at the street views, um, this entire section that is town-owned, um, according to the street views, also looks like it is sort of occupied by the neighboring lot. Um, that it's not something that's sitting on what's visibly on that, it looks like it has been, like the neighbor's lot has expanded into it. So, I mean, there is, I think when this, this building is built, it may look like that it's being built a lot closer to the lot because of where the fence lines are running currently, but the fence lines appear to be soundly on, um, town property.
That's correct.
So I think there's gonna be a visual, a visual impact that's pretty negative, but realistically, um, it's, it's where the land is.
Any final thoughts, Bill?
So I guess where I'm struggling is the same thing, the A and R is probably not the place to enforce what the building looks like or impacts, how it impacts the neighborhood.
Right.
I too am very uncomfortable seeing the drawing, and, uh, thank you Angela for bringing it up, first of all, and then being so, um, passionate about it. The A and R probably is okay, uh, because regardless of what sits on top of it, they have the right to do this, regardless of whether we say it's okay or not, and I feel uncomfortable holding it back because it's not the tool to do that. Um, fortunately, because the, uh, forty B, and it sounds like the ball is already well-rolling, um, that the plans have already been submitted to somebody, um, either the state or whoever needs to, to get them first for prior approval. Um, and it seems like that the ability of the planning board, whose sole function is to watch out for the, the town as far as development and property uh, placements and planning of the, the communities have very little impact beyond signing off this, let's call it a, I don't mean useless in a bad way, but it has no impact, right? So, you know, it's a little disingenuous for us to sit here and say, oh yeah, this is great, go ahead, do the A and R. We, I, I haven't heard anybody on the board say, oh, that's a great little building, perfect placement, yet it's by the boards on us, right, it's gonna go directly to zoning and it's gonna be kind of a done deal. I see a lot of opportunity here for both the developer and the town to repair or rebuild some of the trust in the community here, rebuild some of the trust in the town where, um, you know, this has been very, very, uh, conflicted for years, and it doesn't have to be, like, there are ways to make solutions, and maybe it's a, maybe it's cost-driven, um, but it seems like there's opportunities for both sides to come out ahead of where we are now despite A and R or no A and R.
I hope so.
I think that was well said.
So when we did it, when we did Elm Street, weren't there public, uh, meetings about the design of the building, and was that just a goodwill on the developer's part, or?
The planning board did have a site plan review.
We did, we had a site plan review.
And I imagine that, that the board would be able to have one this time around as well.
Right.
Right, but there's no, but there's no special permit.
Correct.
Right, it was a non-binding, and if I recall from that meeting, it was, uh, limited amount of suggestions, um.
But because this, um, if I may, may, sorry, Ted, um, but because of the LDA is specific in regards to reviewing the schematic plans, and I will share that with you, that you can see that the town, um, through, well, it's actually through the select board, but I would, I would encourage the select board to really work with the planning board in regards to the, the review of the schematic drawings. Um, I mean, the planning board, it's, it's, it's your sort of jurisdiction to oversee the, the planning and design of structures within the town, um, that I would highly encourage the planning board to, you know, request comments from the planning board on the schematic drawings, and that's included. The review of the, of the drawings, uh, is part of the LDA, and that's something that's done outside of the, uh, of the comprehensive permit.
Thanks, Marzie.
That's helpful.
And as long as that review is sort of not a closed review, so in other words, we just have to go in and, oh, yep, look at it, there it is, if we have some actual input that we could provide, and, you know, make some positive suggestions at work, you know, collaborate with the developers. We want this to be successful as everybody else does.
And I know there's a lot going on with every board in town right now, leading up to town meeting. Um, but I think it would be helpful if we can get a small working group from the planning board to maybe sit down with you, Marzie, and whomever from the project team to convey, um, have a working session, idea session, to convey some, some, uh, some input. Um, and then at the right time, I mean, I, it, it's a municipal project, so I think we have a little bit more uh, involvement than a traditional forty B project. Um, but I think it would be helpful if, you know, to your point, we could request from the select board when they do review projects like this, potentially having a joint meeting with them, something where we can do this publicly and have our, our, um, I'll say our say, but it's what our, our statutory goal and our responsibility is to the town, this is just being done in a way that kind of works around that, but uh, through no miss, you know, bad intention, so I, I think that would be something that would be helpful at the right time to have this done, maybe in a joint meeting with them, um, 'cause, you know, they're, they have their roles and their, their duties, but this is what we do every meeting um, of the month, every month of the year, so this is what we see and, and work on every, you know, with every project in town, so bringing the expertise and the experience that we have, I think, is only additive to a good project.
I think that's.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so, a- and to Bill's point, I think that would be, I would verily, very heavily suggest that, um, and I'm happy to communicate that as well to our, our friends and colleagues on the, uh, on the select board.
And just please let me know who the, um, who the subgroup members might be, and I will reach out to the developers tomorrow and see if we can schedule a, uh, a working session or at least a, um, you know, start the discussion and to see where they are in the, in terms of their schematic plans before they advance them any further. I'd love for them to, to have the feedback, so then, you know, it'll be
Yep.
cost, you know, advantageous for them to understand the concerns that the town has and to see if they can address them.
Thank you, that'd be great. Anybody wanna be on that working group?
I'd be happy to.
Angela, are you interested?
Sure.
Perfect, Angela.
Thank you.
And Jer.
All right, thank you, I will reach out to you both tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, and Marzie, if you, I'm gonna pass my, that part of our conversation on to our colleagues on the select board, but if you could pass it along, um, to Gino as well, I think that would be helpful.
I certainly will, thank you.
What's the project timeline, so you have until the eighteenth for these A and Rs, what's the, what's the next steps, I'm just trying to get context as to where the process goes from here.
Absolutely, so, uh, what happens now is that, uh, the Department of Housing and Livable Communities had forwarded, um, to the town a thirty-day comment letter. Uh, so what that means is just really the state, uh, or the developer is seeking tax credit and financing uh, from the state for this project, and the town of Swambscott has an opportunity, has thirty days to submit any comments on the project, um, so there is a, um, you saw the rendering that I shared with you, and there's a, a full package uh, that goes along as, as part of that, that outlines the project, the number of units, how many parking spaces, um, the eligibility for the residents in regards to the, uh, the, uh, the subsidized unit and the income levels of their, of the residents, and, uh, the town has an opportunity to po- to comment on it. Uh, those comments are due at the state by May second, that's Friday, May second. Um, and then, once that goes in, um, and the developer will begin to design the project in ways for their project eligibility, eligibility letter from the state, meaning that they will receive the funding, yeah, depending obviously on the comment and what the process is. And, um, from that point, we have some, uh, trigger timelines such as the, the review of the schematic plans, uh, securing or financing, and, um, um, there are other trigger points that are required, I can send to you the entire list in regards to uh, the timeline and, um, the, um, uh, the, um, the variety of different, um, milestones the developer has to reach.
So during, where they are with the project in terms of the executive office of Housing and Livable Communities reviewing the application, right, the initial preliminary filing, if there are changes after that date to things that we had discussed tonight, any change or anything outside of that, is that done before that, or can that be done after that, May second or whatnot?
That can be done after that.
Okay.
Because right now it's just about the, the number of units and the project.
Okay.
And right now it's just really what was shared with the state is a rendering. And they were not shared the schematic plans, they were, they were shared the, the number of units and, you know, the, the, the basic, kind of like the envelope of the structure.
Got it, okay, that's helpful.
Yep, that's helpful.
With that being said, are there any motions, anyone interested in making a motion on this?
So what would the motion be to?
I think we just endorse.
Endorse the A and R.
Yep.
Um, and there's no liability for us in any way, we, it's, it's, it doesn't have to be approved, it's just, uh.
Right.
Yeah, so.
It goes through with or without our endorsement, I think, I just, um.
That's true.
Okay, well, I would, I would second that motion.
Okay.
I'll make it.
You make the motion, Bill makes a motion to endorse, seconded by Jer, all those in favor? Aye.
I.
Aye, all those.
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, so three in favor and one abstention.
So causing the question.
That doesn't mean, that doesn't mean, um, it doesn't mean that I disapprove, it's just
Yep.
I have concerns.
Causing the question.
Absolutely, that, uh, this can end up being, uh, very productive for us all.
Yeah.
Thanks for.
I mean, I, you know, fully, you know, this is not, you know, me trying to stop anything, obviously. So, um, okay, thank you for, and thanks, everyone, for, for listening, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for presenting on that, Marzie, appreciate it, and, uh.
Yes, thank you, Marzie, thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
I'll reach out to the developer team tomorrow, and I'll struggle back with you, Angela and with Jer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marzie.
So related, unrelated question, uh, what is, why, why is this a requirement, is this a state requirement that we do A and Rs, or like?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah.
And that's not negotiable?
Yes.
It's written into the bylaws, or?
Yeah, it's applied to every plan, every planning board across the state.
It falls under the Subdivision Control Act, essentially. An A and R is like the first thing you kind of look at, where it doesn't need, it doesn't need to be a subdivision to, to move the lots around, to change lot lines, providing that each lot, you know, that you want to include in your, in your A and R has frontage, has adequate frontage on, on a existing street.
So part of me thinks we sat here for an hour and a half, uh, to do something we didn't have to do, right? But the other part of me says that it forced us to understand something we didn't know that would've gone right by the boards. So I am kind of, again, conflicted on whether or not we can do it, but we have to do it anyway, there's no point in debate, I just wanted to see where.
No, I mean, and I think, right, and it is gonna happen, um, again, you know, um, my, my point is a concern which I'm, you know, I'll do go through the process, I can put it in a letter, I can voice my concern, that's that. I think, you know, this is, it's town-owned property, like, you, you know, and as I said before, if we did absolutely nothing, it's gonna happen anyway, so, because it, because it can, it's a, they don't need our approval. I don't know, I don't know why it's part of the subdivision control act that they, we have to endorse it, but that's, you know, it makes it, uh, you know, they, everyone would prefer to have that, is it makes it sort of official that we created these new lots, and it gets registered and, and all of that, and then the lot line officially changes.
Okay. Next up on our agenda is discussion of the proposed zoning bylaws. Um, discussion and hopeful vote to codify the language here. Um, so Marissa, do you wanna take us through the red lines, if we have that?
Yeah, I, I'll start with, um, the easy one, which ironically is, I guess, the, the coastal flood overlay.
Yep.
And that's just 'cause it's, it's model language that we were given by Mass DCR, and like, we've mentioned and spoken about before, this is just language that's bringing us into compliance with the new regulations that were established by Mass DCR, and then also, uh, in compliance with the new flood insurance rates, flood insurance rate maps that will be issued by FEMA, um, sometime this summer. So, one thing that I mentioned in my email to you guys last week was that section four one zero zero of the zoning bylaw is currently entitled the Floodplain Wetlands Overlay Protection District. And it also references a map, and when I found that map upstairs in Public Works, that map literally just applies to Palmer Pond, um, assuming that it's been since expanded to maybe other wetlands in town, you know, we have like Muskrat Pond, um, we have a vernal pool out by the elementary school, those are other wetlands, um, those are very different topographic, um, areas, uh, in town, um, that don't necessarily compare to the floodplain areas in town. So, it probably makes sense that we remove the term floodplain from that, uh, from section four one zero zero, so as not to conflate the two, and, um, and then subsequently entitle our what is now currently known as the Coastal Flood Area Overlay District, District to the Floodplain Overlay District, which matches the, the model bylaw language, and then four one zero zero will become the Wetlands Protection Overlay District, so it'll speci- those are regulations specifically pertaining to wetlands. Um, and, and then, you know, also, keep in mind that the Conservation Commission also has jurisdiction over the wetlands through the Wetlands Protection Act. Um, but, just wanted to.
The wet.
Oh, go ahead.
Then, no, no, that's fine, I'm just, I don't mean to interrupt, but, so the four one one zero was what seems like a dangling participle, I mean, it's like, it's kind of hanging out there without, you know, so, so where should it go, are there specific, um, you know, is it, you know, when it comes to building, I'm not talking about Concom stuff, when it comes to building anything, um, anything in wetlands would have to, you know, go through, um, notice of intent anyway, right, it would have to go to Concom, so it's a different procedure altogether, however, doesn't it make sense in terms of building that the same requirements would be, would apply to anything in wetland area, or is?
Currently, there, even as our bylaw stands right now, there's absolutely no building allowed in the wetlands. Like, in the actual wetlands themselves, like, no building can happen whatsoever. Building can happen within the buffer zone, but our by, our zoning bylaw doesn't actually regulate that, our Wetlands Protection Act regulates that, and so that's where.
So perhaps, yeah, perhaps that language then, whatever used to be there, um, but that language to be, you know, complies with the conditions, um, imposed by the Conservation Commission, or something that.
That's in there already.
Oh, okay, it looks like.
Yeah, we, we just don't have it in front of us.
Yeah, it, that's, that's because this was just purely for the sake of, like, changing the title.
Administrative almost.
Yeah, exactly.
So, I get it now.
Yeah.
So this little piece, the forty-one hundred is just there to show the, the.
That's where the change is being made.
Correct.
Got it, got it, okay, thank you, I was concerned, and the rest of it was just hanging.
Yeah, no, just simply looking to rename that.
It's nice that we can correct the spelling of flood, floodplain, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and so then, um, four two zero zero will be the Floodplain Overlay District, and, um, and again, haven't been any changes since we last went through the, uh, red line version, anything, there's nothing. Um, very minimal, like, striking of language, uh, most of it is just all new language that is being added, and that's all updated regulations from DCR.
Right.
So.
Okay, now that, if all, everything else looks fine, that was, I'm like, wait a second, I'm like, wait a second. It's like a whole bunch of information's missing here, okay.
And just to clarify, since Swambscott participates in the PRISM program, or the FIRM program, the, the Federal Flood Insurance Program.
Yep.
With, this language is stuff that we have to adopt as part of that, right? In adopting the maps.
Correct.
Got it.
Right.
That was my understanding.
Now, the, also, you know, Massachusetts calls it the Floodplain Overlay District. Now, also, you know, Massachusetts calls it the Flood Plane Overlay District.
Right.
You know, we we called it a flood, you know, an overlay flood district, a wetlands district. We called it a flood hazard district, and we had so many different terminologies.
Right.
Bouncing around that that it was like when something was being built, they didn't even know, you know, they went to zoning for relief, for example. They they weren't even sure, like, you know, what rules applied.
The thing is, is that they.
Because the names, the names are all different.
Right. The thing is, is that they technically don't, I've never actually seen somebody come to the zoning board for relief. And actually, one thing that our bylaw that is changing with this language in the bylaw is really what it is, is that the zoning board just, both the building commissioner and the zoning board of appeals review whatever project, whatever construction is being proposed in accordance with the the bylaws that we have for the Coastal Flood Area Overlay District. I've never actually seen somebody really need relief. But per these new regulations, if somebody's going to seek a variance from the regulations set forth in this section, they have to appeal to the state. They cannot appeal to our local board. Our local board does not have, no longer has the jurisdiction to waive any of the regulations set forth in this bylaw because this bylaw is tied mostly to state building code. And so if they want to seek relief or any kind of waiver, they have to go to the state board of appeals. So the Swambsk Local Board of Appeals automatically gets bypassed.
So I I have a quick question. It's, I'm sort of jumping ahead, but under four two three oh, the, is it that this Essex County Flood Insurance Rate Map is not coming into effect until July 8th, 2025? It's just interesting to see something dated further out. Yeah, so that's just because that's when it comes into effect.
That, correct.
Perfect.
Yep.
I just.
Yeah.
I think right now they, did they release draft ones yet or is that what we're?
I keep looking. I haven't seen any.
We do have a draft.
There are drafts? I haven't seen anything.
I thought there was one, Marissa. I mean, when I, you know, I thought there was one, but you can't download it. Like, it was.
They're so heavy, like, the, like.
Yeah.
Digitally, like, the.
Right.
I I thought I saw one and I saw they were, I thought they were releasing a draft in February. But.
Yeah.
I can't remember. I'll have to go back and see if I can find it, but regardless, I mean.
So this is, this is good. And I do think that, you know, in terms of permitting, though, if somebody came to us next week, you know, once, well, let's just say, once we, once this gets on the warrant, basically, and and, you know, we know we're going to vote on it, or once we vote on it at town meeting, even before it gets approved by the state and so forth, it's basically law. So if someone was going to put a, you know, bring some kind of a permit before us, even if it were prior to July, to that particular date, I think we can still enforce it based upon based upon the fact that it's in the bylaw that adds up that date unless, yeah.
Totally. Okay. And for that matter, too, I mean, I don't know if it makes sense to talk about it right now, but one way that, one, so with respect to the site plan special permit language, there were, you know, that was one thing that we hadn't comprehensively decided on. So one thing I included in there in iteration number three was adding another subsection to include any construction in the flood area overlay should be subject to site plan review, whether it's a one hundred square foot addition or a brand new home.
Yeah.
Subjected to site plan review, bring it before you guys. The developer, whoever is filing that application, has to present a flood plain memo, like the previous applications have had to do. Talk about any short term, long term effects, any necessary mitigation strategies, that kind of thing. That way, there's oversight on your part because it might not necessarily, coastal flood or flood overlay construction might not necessarily come before the zoning board of appeals. And so that gives you guys a little extra oversight as well.
Right, because they're, they're really not going to be, you know, something's, you know, unless they, they're just looking, they're looking at relief. So they're just going to look at something, oh, yeah, it's in the flood plain. I don't know that that zoning is even going to go through it to see.
Right.
You know, what what's allowed. And I think that's something that will be important for us to, you know, kind of connect with zoning on that after town meeting, just to make sure that everyone understands.
Right.
Because this is, it is a big shift from what we've been doing.
Mm hmm, for sure.
But I think you did a great job just updating this and and aside from my 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 lapse in understanding the beginning. I don't have any other questions about it.
Are there any other questions from the board on this?
Nope.
On the flood segment?
Nope, okay.
Yeah, it looks great.
Cool.
I think at this point, we'll just need to vote to assume this as the final language. And the select board on Wednesday will be using the language from our vote tonight in closing the warrant.
Correct.
So we got in just under the wire.
And I think it still needs to go to town council, does it not? And they they'll look at it before we print it in there or something, Marissa?
Yeah, I can send it to them. This one, I worked with Eric Carlson directly from DCR
Oh, okay.
on the language to do the back and forth. So I'll certainly send it to town council as like the final seal of approval. But this one should be like.
Yeah.
Already tied neatly with a bow, so.
Okay.
So is there a motion to adopt this as the?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Awesome.
Perfect. Next, we can head to ADUs?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
So. ADUs. Again, the big changes are, excuse me, in to maintain compliance with the newly issued state regulations. One of the main changes is that no municipality can unreasonably impose design restrictions on an ADU that they would not impose on a single or two family structure. So in our current iteration of the bylaw, five eleven three four and five eleven three six, we talk about, oh, no, sorry, five one three four is different.
The pervious area.
Correct, yeah, just five eleven three six, there shall not be a reduction in the amount of pervious area or removal of trees on the property for the sake of constructing an ADU. That's not necessarily a restriction that we would impose on anybody looking to just build a single family home or in addition. You know, as long as they maintain that open space requirement of twenty five percent, you know, then then they're allowed to go forth with the construction as shown in the plans and same thing with removal of trees. And so it would, it would probably be, it might be unreasonably considered to have that restriction imposed on an accessory dwelling unit, on the construction of an accessory dwelling unit.
Yep, no, I think that's a real brainer for us to remove. They're going to, that would one hundred percent.
Right.
Not fly, given the the guidance that they've put out. The really, the only things in here that are optional, so to say, is five eleven three six as proposed, eliminating short term rental for the ADU and then adding the definition of what a short term rental is. Where the specific language for short term rental, was that suggested by KPLR or is that from building code?
That came directly from the state regulations for ADUs.
Yeah, I'm very much in favor of that.
So let me just ask a question. If this is to come up in town meeting, this is the only one that I have any concerns with?
The short term rental?
Yeah, I am just wondering if there is a way, if this becomes controversial, to state that no ADU shall be offered as a short term rental without owner occupancy of the main structure. Because I think that there there could be people that were doing this well, where it wasn't like an isolated party house in the middle of the neighborhood. But it it was, I just, I don't, I don't like restricting viable financial gain for people, but I do think it would be reasonable to state that that owner occupancy was was necessary. So I don't, I don't know how the rest of you feel about that.
I think it says that, doesn't it, in the definition of short term rental, like that it has to be owner occupied?
Don't, no, it can be also be a non non owner occupied property.
Oh, okay. I I think that it flies in the face of the purpose of the core purpose of the bylaw. So I'm totally against eliminating that language. I think it has to be in there. The purpose of it is to create affordable housing situation for someone not like a place to stay for the summer while they're looking for another house or while they're waiting. I mean, it just, that's not the purpose and it.
It's more more what I'm thinking about is people, I mean, this this adventure is a very costly thing. And there are families that need to plan and establish something like this. And a short term rental might be the most viable way for them to fund building this for a family that is going to be moving in in two or three years in the sense of maximizing their ability to cover that cost. Because this is a case where we have a town with a wide swing in what income and disposable income looks like. So I'm always hesitant. I I think the ADU as a concept is fabulous. But I also recognize it's fabulous for people that have finances to be able to afford. These are not inexpensive solutions. They're expensive solutions. So I don't like the idea of hamstringing stringing people that there might be a way for them to do this, but if we set up the rules so only the people that are wealthy enough to build build them to move a family member into it, I don't know. I just, I think that it.
Hold on a second. So you're saying, but so in other words, you're saying that, so if I wanted to move into that in three years and my sister, for example, is going to take on the responsibility of, you know, she set out, you know, we'll build an ADU and, you know, when you're done, you know, whatever, you'll, you know, for whatever reason is, I would move in there in a few years. And to help her sort of, you know, kind of recoup some cost on that before I move in, I mean, she could rent it out for a year or two or three years. I don't have a problem with that. I have a problem with week to week or a month at a time or the summer and then gone and then, you know, two weeks and then gone and then that's not the same thing.
I feel if there's someone that is living on the property and if they are running this like an Airbnb, like some people do currently in Swambsk, it really, you know, it really isn't, in my opinion, I don't think it's a good idea to overly limit the financial approach to being able to afford to build something like this.
So you're saying that if somebody builds it just for to pay itself off and then as a source of income for themselves?
I I'm saying that it could be something that was a source of income for themselves. It's it's a case where I don't, I don't really like us sort of creating worst case scenarios and trying to stop them from happening. I think that I I'm not crazy about a non owner occupied building being able to create an ADU and I and and rent it out. So all of a sudden, there's like extra extra activity happening that isn't, without people overseeing it. I personally think that people being able to rent parts of their homes in a short term fashion when they are there being responsible in the moment, I think that's a different scenario.
I think that's a lot to, that's a lot to control. That's all I can say. It sounds good. I understand what you're saying, Jer, and and I I really do understand what you're saying. And I think that theoretically, it sounds reasonable, but we can't control all those things. We can't control, you know, we can't be, you know, supervising who's living there or if they have somebody, if they have, you know, a house down on Elwin Road somewhere, not, I'm not talking about you. You know, that and and they have, you know, a nice carriage house they fixed up in the back, who doesn't have it rented out every other week in the summertime for, you know, the people? I mean, I just don't think that is, I think it is completely contrary to the to the intent of the bylaw. And and I don't think that it's a problem to, if you had, you know, someone that wasn't prepared to move in right away and you rented it out to somebody for a year. I mean, I think that's completely reasonable to do that. And I think it's, you know, it respects everybody else who around you and it allows you the flexibility of having, you know, being able to rent it out in that nature. But I just think short term is, you know.
I I guess I sort of feel that if short term were such an issue, it would have been built into the state bylaw. I don't know. It just really does feel restrictive.
They did call it out as one of the very few places that municipalities can control. So it's one of the few places that they did make a note to a lot of times today. My question here is the definition of short term rental, to me, reads, it reads if anybody renting any place for any period of time, not just short.
Anything they want.
For anything, right, like.
So we can put, you know, why don't we, why don't we put a timeline in it then?
I would. Yeah, I would suggest, I've seen other communities that are reviewing this or have short term rental defined in their zoning bylaws, which.
Yeah, there's another short term.
They define it as this period of nights. I thought the state had language, and I may have misread, but I thought the state had language that said it was shorter than thirty days, which I would, it would make sense to me. If someone wants to do month to month, that's not thirty days, but, you know. Really, they just don't want weekend or week to week rentals on the Cape or wherever, at some vacation place. And I think that makes sense here to add language for thirty days or whatever that trigger that this board feel comfortable with. But I think we need to add that in the definition.
So I think the definition is a little bit, well, it's a mouthful, right? So it's basically this, 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 and this, and not this, but this also and that. And it seems to contradict five eleven three six. So five eleven three six, we're adding no ADU shall be offered as short term rental. And then basically like Ted mentioned, short term rental is is anything. So I'm not sure.
Yeah, so we.
Are complementing each other.
I think it's, I think it's all in how we want to define a short term rental. How do you want to define?
I know we've talked about this, but I I'm positive we had a bed and breakfast bylaw that defines short term rental.
Uh, absolutely right.
I don't know that they define short, I can double check on that. I don't know that they define short term rentals, but I think the distinguishing factor, too, between bed and breakfast and what what is defined here as a short term rentals, that bed and breakfast is considered a business use. And that would, that would involve going to the town clerk, getting a business certificate, establishing yourself as a business and then operating as such, which whereas this is just, I want to rent out my room next door because, you know, my, I'm an empty nester and, you know, I don't mind vacationers coming into my house every couple of weeks or that kind of thing.
To to Bill's point, it does, five thirteen two three, I'm sorry, five thirteen two two, allowable length of stay in lodging establishments is no less than one night and no greater than thirty nights. So that's the definition it gets to.
Right. And we did that for, I believe, for hotels and inns and bed and breakfast. We did not allow motels.
Right.
So I don't see what the difference between a B and B and Airbnb and an ADU is as far as what the owner can do with them.
So I get, it's kind of like the, it's sort of like that and like the that analogy, like all thumbs are fingers, but not all fingers are thumbs, you know, like an ADU could be, I guess, well, you know, like a house or a a structure. A structure could be a bed and breakfast, you know, it could be an ADU and it could be a short term rental. But any, conversely, not one of the, any one of those doesn't necessarily fit the other. So if somebody has a nine hundred square foot accessory dwelling unit in the back of their home, you know, that could be the accessory dwelling unit and maybe their rent, their their in-laws are living there, right? And by virtue of being nine hundred square feet, you know, smaller than the principal structure, sharing utilities with that principal structure, everything is held in common ownership, so to speak, it it fits the definition, the mold of what is an accessory dwelling unit. And then if, you know, the in-laws move out and the homeowner says, okay, well, maybe I want to try this vacation rental thing and I'm going to start leasing it out wherever, right near the beach. What if beachgoers want to come and enjoy Swambsk and they start renting it out for a week periods at a time? Then it becomes a short term rental. And rather than being a bed and breakfast, because they're just, the homeowner is operating it as an individual rather than as an established business.
Right.
Which is what a bed and breakfast would be.
And the zoning language does define bed and breakfast as requiring owner occupancy?
It does now, but I thought we're. It does now, but I thought we were talking about, this, this says it doesn't have to be owner.
Because that's, that's short-term rental. When they say bed and breakfast establishment in the definition, and we could always strike that, you know, but I think they might. I wonder if they're just, it's, if it's sort of like a, a non-branded reference to Airbnb. You know, like vacation home.
I don't think so, because bed and breakfast predated.
Right.
I mean, that would have been in, on the books.
Right.
For. I mean, there was a. That was something that sort of disappeared and then reappeared in the nineteen, late seventies and eighties where people were very much. There were organizations that you could do this, where you brought people and they, they stayed in your spare bedroom and you made them breakfast.
Right, right.
Um, Airbnb was strictly the digital or the, you know, online version of it.
Right.
Um, I think the, the definition that is currently here, it's, uh, five thirteen two two.
Or the, the B and B?
The current. Travel and tourist lodging establishment section of the zoning bylaw. Allowable length of stay for lodging establishments is no less than one night, no greater than thirty nights. I think that's what we could do, I would just point that as the definition of short-term rental. I mean, use that, those timelines there.
Right.
I think we called it transient.
Yeah.
But I'm just, I'm just not sure when there is a structure that is attached or detached from your house, that if you're allowed to rent out. As an, as a bed and breakfast or as, what did you call it, a tourist and.
Transient lodging.
Tourist and transient lodging, it being connected to your house and it being disconnected from your house.
That doesn't necessarily matter.
I don't think it matters at all.
But you wouldn't be able to rent it out as an official bed and breakfast or as some kind of like tourist lodge, because. Where, these are in residential zoning districts and those are just.
Those are.
Those are, yeah, not allowed.
Right, and also the, the language here on the current bylaw, the travel and tourist bylaw does require to be in the primary building, so any ADU would not be compliant because of.
So it has to be in your primary building?
The bed and breakfast one.
I don't think so.
With overnight transient lodging accommodations within residential buildings offered to the general public. Yeah, within a residential building, so I guess it.
But an ADU is a residential building. I don't know, I, I just.
But we also have a specific overlay district for that.
Not for B and Bs, I think they're across the board.
I.
Right, Air, Airbnbs are, right, and re, all residential districts, not in commercial districts.
Air, you mean Airbnb's?
No.
No, I meant, uh, AD, excuse me, I meant ADUs.
Oh, ADUs, right.
In every, every residential district, not in commercial districts.
Right, but the, this is the.
But Bill, were you referring, were you talking specifically about like bed and breakfast establishments?
So there's an overlay for the, the tourist, uh, zone, which.
Tourist lodging overlay district.
Falls just short where Hadley.
And where is that?
It's over by Puritan Cove. And then, doesn't it go over by Puritan where the bend is, by Cassidy Beach and Lincoln House Point?
Yeah, it goes around that bend, I think at one point it took a break and then started again, but I think we made it contiguous.
Yeah.
Um, but it's only there and it, it stops just at Hadley. Oh, geez, I don't know why.
Yeah, the definition here does say guest rooms shall be located within the primary residential structure. Fifteen, or five thirteen six three.
Okay.
So that, what's that district based on?
Uh, the planning board took a map and said this looks good.
Is that because that was where the hotel was that burned down over by Johnson Park?
Well, it was, and there, there were, there were inns along there, you know, historically, but we also went to several public meetings and. You know, with neighbors and so forth to talk about that, isn't, do you recall that, Bill, because we had people that were. Some people that were really upset about, you know, not having it here, but having it there and.
Yeah.
So we kind of just, you know, worked our way down to what actually made sense in terms of, you know, historical patterns. Um, and what would, you know, uh, kind of not be, you know, du, you know, disturbing or to a, you know. This was in terms of a business, right?
Yeah, I, I underestimated certainly, Angela, I apologize, but we actually did quite an extensive, uh. Uh, process for that, we had a.
Right.
There was a subcommittee bylaw review committee, subcommittee.
That's right.
At the time, and there was extensive research done in neighboring communities. Salem, Newburyport, uh, down the, the South Shore, we did some places. And we came up with, uh, kind of a, the best eclectic mix of definitions and types of locations and types of businesses that would fit in Swambskett at the time. And, um, it was a very concerted effort between the planning board and the town, because there were public hearings and.
Yeah, multiple public hearings, lot of community engagement, which Bill, Bill, you headed up all of that stuff, it was extremely thorough. So, you know, that's, just to answer your question, because it's a good one, how did you come up with that zone, that's basically how.
Excellent. Um, I did have one question about five eleven three point four. Pre-existing detached structures eligible for conversion to an ADU may be demolished and reconstructed in accordance, oh, I need to look at two two point seven three. I'm just curious, um, because. Are we at any risk with that statement? Where, you know, we have a number of historic carriage houses in the historic districts, is that protected, or like. Is there, do we need a note? In there because.
No, no, I don't think, so we've had, this bylaw has already been put into practice a couple of times this past year.
Okay.
Um, where, uh, people have had. Just accessory buildings where they're not foundationally sound to then be converted into, into an ADU, so two two seven three is. Um, the subsection of our zoning bylaw that protects single and.
Non-conforming single and two.
Two-family structures and their accessory structures. So it's part of the state's forty A, section six.
So let's say, um, someone came and they wanted to knock down one of the historic carriage houses in the Olmsted district.
Then they would have to come before the district, the commission.
So the district, that would, that would still be a certificate of non-applicability or a certificate of appropriateness that they would need to get, and if the commission. Said, no, this is a, a contributing structure.
Right.
Okay.
If you're on Farragut Road, you've got two sets of bylaws that you're working with, you've got this one, if your structure is not conforming, and then you have to come to the commission.
Okay.
Back the other bylaws, so.
And that the historic district is a, it's a, it's a zone, you know.
Yeah, okay, I just want to make sure that, that, that wouldn't at all.
Zoning applies.
Yeah, because I want to definitely safeguard.
Absolutely.
I don't want to weaken the historic district.
So, uh, just to kind of close the loop on the short-term rental side of things. It, it sounds, I. Think I agree with. Your point, Angela, about. You know, we know what the goal of the. Of the, you know, governor's bill was that, that allowed this by right, we know what the goal of our local bylaw was when we did this two or three years ago. And allowing short-term rental, I, I can understand where you're coming from, you're giving some people flexibility to do that. I would get nervous with the adverse effects of that. I don't know, I don't feel strongly about it either way, but I also. I, I don't know, I'm curious your thoughts.
Plus, there are people that have Airbnb's, I mean, they, they're, you know, most of them are registered. And, you know, they, they pay taxes on them and so forth and, and, you know, and if someone can just have that whole benefit without. Having to deal with any of it, you know, that's, that's not fair either. I also feel like it's just so out of alignment with the spirit of law.
So wait a second, from what you just said though.
Really stretching it.
I di, I didn't follow the argument you just made with if people. I don't think this would give people the ability to bypass any regulations on Airbnb. This is, this is basically saying that space can't be used for Airbnb.
Right, which I think it shouldn't be. I don't think you should have people in there for shorter than thirty days. I don't think it's right, I don't, that we are not, we're, that's not housing.
So I, so that would be, that would be something that. The, one thing here in the short-term rental. I think maybe there would, it would make sense though, because unfortunately, the idea of a year lease. Is not, in my opinion, for ADU the best situation.
Totally agreed.
So maybe the short-term rental, is this where we reiterate, because one thing there, it says short-term rental and there's nothing. In this about, it just says you can't rent it.
Right.
It doesn't actually give any parameters. So I think we do need to add language in that says. And where would it be inserted?
I think we would just, I think.
Just reference.
Just within this section itself, or if there are additional regulations, other subsections?
I would just, the, the definition that was in, that I read before, that was in the tourists and lodging.
Five thirteen something.
Yeah, that of no, short-term rentals can not be rented for less than one night and no more than thirty consecutive.
So how do we get from to, how do we send someone from here to there? I mean, that's the whole thing, is I think the bylaw.
Capitalize it, capitalize. Capitalize the word so that it implies the definition, or we can put in parentheses, see definitions.
I think that, because there's one that sends over here where already. Well, going back to the five eleven three four, we say conversions to an ADU may be demolished and reconstructed in accordance with.
Right.
So this would be.
I think we'd have to re, we, we can't just point to this section, because this allowable length of stay in a lodging establishment, where this is distinctly. Not a lodging establishment.
Right, right.
And we can't, we shouldn't.
But I think we.
Pretend it is.
But I think we should slip in there.
In a lodging establishment or an ADU, I mean, you know.
Or, or we could even just say, I mean, we can just use the same language.
I mean.
Just repeat the words.
Yeah. Allowable length of stay. In a accessory dwelling unit. Is no less than thirty nights or something to that.
And I think it'd be good to let town council pick that apart a little bit and, um.
So say, say that again, allowable.
So kind of using the same language, but reversing, allowable length of stay in an accessory dwelling unit is no less. Than thirty consecutive nights.
Minimum thirty consecutive nights.
At a minimum of, right. Right, because at least in practice.
But if you can't say it's a length of stay, it would have to say a rent.
Rental or, uh.
Allowable length of rental?
Of rental.
Agreement.
Mm-hmm. In concept, though, we're all more in line with thirty days or more is fine for rental, thirty days or less, twenty-nine days or less is not.
Yeah, I, I think we, I think, I think a month-to-month lease is incredibly reasonable. I don't, I don't really feel that's the same variation as running a tourist.
Yeah, I, I can, I think that's a good.
Yeah, and that way, that does, that does allow people to. You know, keep.
Gives people options.
It gives people more financial options, I'm just, I'm just really concerned that we have things, like I, I did not like our ADU version where if you. Were lucky enough to have an existing building, you got grandfathered in and if you were, didn't have a detached.
You're the rest of us.
I, I just, um, I just want to see this thing so that it works all, all neighborhoods, all socioeconomic.
Totally agreed, so for language, um. I think we just need to come to some finality of language before we leave here tonight, because they're closing the warrant Wednesday and obviously pending KP laws review of it. Um, which they will do. I don't know, Marissa, are you able to, are there any, I'm trying to think if there's any other towns that have already enacted local control on short-term rentals for ADUs that we could steal?
So new, it's so new.
Yeah.
I mean, worst-case scenario, I mean, hope, in the event that we get to tackle short-term, blanket short-term rental law in this coming year.
Yeah.
You know, this bylaw would only be.
Right.
Three hundred and sixty-five days.
Mm-hmm.
Um. What was the language that we, the allowable length of rental, uh, of an ADU shall not be less than thirty consecutive nights?
I think the minimum, I think we could, Bill made it a little easier, maybe a minimum rental, ADUs may be offered for rent for a minimum of thirty days. Period.
Consecutive.
Consecutive, consecutive days, consecutive days, yeah.
Not to be a calendar nerd, but we have twen, one twenty-eight and twenty-nine day month, um, I know thirty days is used that way.
I wouldn't get too worried about that.
Yeah.
We've been not saying a thirty-one day month either, so. I think it's, that's a general accept, so you can say by the month. You can, you know, if you want to put it that way, but I think, I think using thirty days is, is pretty. Average, you know, considering there are thirty-ones and there are twenty-eights or twenty-nines and. I think it. I, I don't think it's a, it's problematic.
Rent an ADU will be breaking the bylaw for the month of February.
Yeah.
Right.
Just for a day though.
Okay, so many people want to stay here in February, because it's such a.
Yeah, exactly, it's, it's where we all want to be.
Let's go to Swambskett for a February break.
Um, does, does that definition that Bill, that we kind of just talked about, the. Minimum rental period for an accessory dwelling unit shall be thirty days.
Minimum.
Thirty days.
Minimum thirty days.
Minimum of thirty days, period.
Thirty days, yeah.
Yeah.
That being the only cha, and I think we were, we want to replace all of that short-term rental language with just that simple statement?
I, I think so.
I, I think we should, I have read this ten times and I still have no idea what.
What are we doing, what about letting the short? But I think it's, I think having that short-term rental language in there is important because it's the, it's an idea. And I think it's where people.
It's getting into, all of a sudden, we're talking about, we send them over to it under an ADU section, we're talking about hotels and motels and lodging houses.
Why don't we just put it in the bylaw? Write it on the part about, where we talk about the short-term rental in the bylaw. And just say, in, which is in this, in this cir, in this circumstance, no fewer than thirty consecutive days.
I think that's a good idea, strike the definition of short-term rental from here.
Don't reflect it to a section, just say in this bylaw.
Yeah.
Oh, well, wait a, wait a second, let's.
I think that's a good idea.
So let me just see if I understand what you're saying, we're going to take the definition of short-term rental out. And over at five eleven three point six, no ADU shall be offered. For rent for less than thirty days.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
I think that is.
That makes sense, because that other one doesn't, doesn't fit in here.
That's a clean change, so.
I think that's, that's good.
Yeah, I agree.
In the language that we said is, no ADU shall be, or. No ADU shall be offered for rent for less than thirty consecutive days.
Then we get rid of this whole.
And get rid of that whole definition, short-term rental, clean, easy, I think that's great.
All right.
Um, so with that, small change.
Less than thirty consecutive days.
Consecutive days.
Yeah, yeah.
Marissa, do you have that language now?
No ADU shall be offered for rent for a period of less than thirty consecutive days.
Correct.
Right.
Perfect.
Okay.
Motion to approve that.
So moved.
Administrator.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
I'll second. I.
I.
Perfect, great.
Good job, ooh, okay. And, all right, site plan.
Site plan special permit.
Our favorite. All right, so every single page is the same, but just a different version, so.
Oh.
Version one is just simply striking the, uh, square footage requirement for residential new construction and the bylaw. Five four two three will simply say, any new construction of a single or two-family residence, period.
Yeah.
Anything three or more is commercial and that follows under five four two one.
So version one just eliminates new construction?
Correct, correct.
Can I just put something out there instead of, unless you guys want to go through every version? Can we just kind of, can I just kind of say what I, like, does it make sense, instead of going by version, just saying. Here's what, you know, ideally the, the fa, final version would look like?
Yeah, I, that's what, um, well, that's sort of what version.
Essentially what you're doing, right?
Yeah, that's sort of what version four was, my own, I think the only iffy one was five four two two. Which I don't know where we landed on the square footage for residential additions, if we like, if we were okay with keeping the eight hundred for now.
I'm not, yeah.
I think it's too.
Too big, lower it to five hundred, that seemed to be the other.
I think five hundred is very, very reasonable, okay?
And I think it's too big.
You think it's too big? What do you think, Chair, what do you, what do you think would be reasonable?
Five hundred is twenty-five by twenty-five and we're doing no site plan, am I doing bad math?
Unless it.
I know, I'm, you know, I'm okay with going small, or I just want something that's gonna, I want to make sure it's gonna pass.
Uh, the, the problem that I have with this being, um. I think the thing that needs to be understood here is, is that when you shift lot sizes, you, you shift density of neighborhoods. In some neighborhoods, eight hundred square feet, people aren't going to notice it.
Right.
And in some neighborhoods. And in some neighborhoods, it is going to be looming over you.
Yep.
So, um, that's, and then the other thing is the. Square feet of gross floor area, I think we should be talking in footprint too.
I, we, we say G F A and I feel like really, we really only mean G S F, gross square footage. I feel like in.
So let's say it.
Yeah, in, in definition, we say gross floor area, but I feel like in practice, we really only say gross square footage.
I know, but that's different, gross square footage.
Completely different.
No, no, but I don't think flo- floor area is open for misinterpretation.
Right.
It's footprint.
Right.
That's right.
Um, so I think.
How about this, can I, can I recommend something?
Yeah.
But because I think that we, there's something we could do, so under five four two two, residential addition. We could say, construction, exterior alteration or exterior expansion of a single or two-family residence, that, take the I out. Changes or alters the footprint of a residence, period. Then you take the rest of it out and, cause how the hell are we supposed to know if like back in nineteen seventy, it required a site plan? I don't know. I mean, that, that's absurd, nobody knows, and plus, I just, I think it just, it's, means nothing. It, it's like, it, it just makes it looser, so. Um, or, um, that changes the footprint of a residence, or. Which basically is, you know, in other words, they can, so if they're just wanna build a second floor on top of a single floor and they're not gonna change a square footage. That second floor can be, and there we can say, any, more than four hundred square feet, or something like that, or, you know, gross, whatever you're gonna say. Um, what do you wanna say, uh, gross square feet, is it that what you want?
Right, I think so.
You want both, because I think the footprint and the gross square feet are really important.
Yep.
Cause we're talking about footprint, which I a hundred percent agree with Chair, and then we're talking about massing.
Right.
Which is, you know, could be the same footprint, but the massing is, is, can just be, as we've seen in the past, can just be ridiculous. Um, and then they're putting a deck out back and, you know, and then before you know it, it's like, well, that's not a room. And, but there's a, there's a bedroom over the deck, but the deck's not, we just, you know.
So let me go back and just see if I understand, so you're saying residential addition, construction, exterior al- exterior alteration. Or exterior expansion of a single or two-family residence that changes or alters the footprint.
We could say by X amount of square feet.
Of a residence.
Just not, not even, that changes or alters the square, the, the footprint, so that's one piece of it. I don't care if you alter the footprint by ten feet on one side.
Okay.
You know, ten by ten, I mean, it alters the footprint and to your point Chair, something like that, like up by where your house is.
That's a big deal, yeah.
Okay, so alters the square footprint, period, not period, but I mean, doesn't matter by how much, that alters the footprint. Or involves an addition of more than X number of square feet.
Well, then wouldn't one just encompass two? Wouldn't change or alter the footprint imply even an addition of?
No, because you can, you can go up.
Oh.
And so basically.
I didn't alter the footprint of my house, but I went up a half story.
Sure, right, right.
So this is, this would then say, changes or alters the footprint of a residence. Or involves an addition. Of more than blank square feet of gross floor area.
I get uncomfortable with the any size change to a footprint, and I say that because somebody putting a six-by-six mudroom on the side of their house. And having them have to come before planning board for a site plan special permit, or site plan review. To me seems excessive and prohibitive of doing what we should be encouraging people to do, which is invest in their properties, getting their assessed values up. Giving us more tax revenue, to be perfectly honest.
But I do.
Yeah, that's a good point, that is a good point, Ken.
I, I do see the.
By twenty-five by twenty-five.
I do see the, the square footage.
Bigger than most of our living rooms.
Yeah, I, I do see the square footage trigger, um, just, you know, how many additions do we see a year that you're aware of? That don't come before site plan, but our footprint changes.
Don't come before a site plan. A few, um.
A few, yeah, and we go, just run through the zoning permits, I mean.
Yeah, I would say upwards of ten, maybe.
And I, I would also say, we catch them in historic district all the time. And, and, but we actually can.
So you have enforcement authority.
Right, in a small portion of the town. Um, but it is, it is a case where we've had a couple of them. That it would've been very helpful for them to be here, because we're looking at the aesthetics of it.
Yeah.
But I can look, I can look at it and say, okay, you've got a two-story addition that's moving.
Ellis Road.
Uh, I don't remember which one. No, no, that, 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 um, Ellis Road, yeah, no, not that one, but there was, there was another one on. Forget where it was, Banks, I think.
Oh.
That it really did, it did really move it over.
Yeah.
Um, so it, it's a case that. You know, twenty-five by twenty-five is, you know, a two, a two-story twenty-five by twenty-five is five hundred square feet. So, um.
But in an area where that would be prohibitive, like, first house I moved in, in Swampscot, I had.
Right.
Lot lines, I could touch the lot lines from my, the window of my house, every lot line, and.
Yeah.
I mean, you, yeah, it's crazy, um, I understand, yeah, any square footage is big. In a place where you have smaller lots and houses are kind of built up upon each other.
Do it anyway because of the setbacks.
Exactly, like, we're gonna be operating on a lot of these properties where I think that would have a large impact, it's gonna be either within the setback. Or have some other dimensional requirement that's gonna cause it to either go before zoning or come before us, so.
That's true.
I think we're kinda getting to a place where, any of these projects where it's gonna be looming, for the most part has to get, would have to get relief anyway, just because of. Our dimensional.
Right.
Needs, um, I just, I just get nervous about making it more difficult for people to try and. Do nominal things to their homes, um, without causing them undue burden by having to.
Yeah.
Do this, and, you know, having to come before a planning board, it's not the end of the world, but another month or two months on a project.
You gotta get an architect, you gotta get plans, you gotta get.
But you know.
Lawyer.
I, I would say that in Marblehead, it's, I think it's five hundred for the, um, the site plan. And, and you look at what they, and that's everything from, you know, your little tiny houses in Old Town, all the way out to the. Mongo things on the neck, and it's five hundred.
I'm very open personally to revisiting the eight hundred, I don't see a huge problem with it, but I hear all of your concerns and I'm, I'm very open to revisiting that.
I think the eight hundred is insane.
Yeah, I do too.
I think I would be more, I would be more apt to be comfortable. I mean, twenty by twenty, I, my living room is big. A twenty by twenty room is bigger than my living room.
Yep.
You know, these are not, these, these dimensions are huge, and I, I personally think that that is an impact. If you think about a twelve-hundred square foot house. A twelve-hundred square foot house could be a two-story house.
Yeah.
And then if you're doing this onto it, it goes from a twelve-hundred square foot house.
Right, forty percent bigger.
But you do have, you know, you're gonna have, like, like Ted said, you've got setbacks, you've got height restrictions and stuff like that.
But, but even, even though there are setbacks and height restrictions, I still think. W- we are, we have such. We are not a uniform community to try to land this stuff, it's like, we, we come up with these numbers and they make me crazy. You know, I, I know you guys are sick of listening to me about, about setbacks, but, you know, we, there's not a magic number on setbacks.
Right.
No, you're absolutely right.
Is, is a big.
All conditional.
It's all conditional, and, you know, there's stuff that people aren't allowed to build that would make sense in the neighborhoods. And there's things that you're allowed to build that make no sense, um.
Maybe we should adopt a form-based code.
I was gonna say, that's a great segue to something we're all very enthusiastic to probably talk about, which is form-based code. Um, that's an undertaking for another time, but.
That's a, that, that's a whole town, but that's one big thing of town meeting all by itself.
But, and.
But like, but a ten by twenty addition is two hundred square feet, and that's still a huge addition on a house.
Chair, would you be comfortable with it by, by zoning district?
We had tossed around a percent, I, I tossed the idea of a percentage.
Doesn't seem fair, does it?
But.
That doesn't seem fair though.
The lot?
What?
Percentage of the existing gross square footage, cause ten percent of a house.
Well, I'll, I'll be frank with you, one of the things that I'm very pleased with historic district is that there is not any cost to coming in front of it. And like, one of the things that really bothers me here is that, you know, you trigger these costs. And there's stuff, there's people that aren't gonna do things, cause they can't, you know, they won't add that addition on, they won't make their house more livable.
Well, I think that's an excellent point, and you know, it's the zoning when you're going for relief, where they should really be, when, you know, and they are charging fees. Or maybe their filing fees can be greatly reduced.
Well, I think if all of us pledged to, pardon?
It's about four fifty.
Four fifty for filing.
About the average, yeah.
It's a lot, I agree, it's a lot of money.
Considering what we're paid.
Yeah. The big bucks.
Yeah.
I know, I would, I could half my salary.
We could all donate our, our stipend from, uh, working, what do you mean, you don't get paid sitting on the plan board, geez, I thought everybody did. Just kidding.
Okay, so, so coming back to this. Where are we on this five four two two?
I'm, personally, I'm very comfortable with going to five hundred, because I think it's a, it's a big departure from where we were. And I think we should, I think it gives us, you know, we're, we're, we're gonna be looking at it. I mean, we're, we're certainly gonna be looking at it, I mean, it does bring every single, you know, I mean. And to your point Ted, even if we left the, the original language in there. Um, exterior alteration or exterior expansion of a single or two-family residence that. Changes or alters a footprint of a residence that previously required site plan approval, or a site plan special per- permit. I mean, you know, that could be a, that could be any house, really, right, so.
But how would anyone know?
It would really only be something if somebody, if it was on the resident card, right, the property card, but. And that's only something that we've done very recently.
Those got lost.
And I think that, I think that's in there because of the aggregate, the aggregate additions to a house, to any particular property, right? So I think that's why that phrase is in there, because of that aggregate, but, um. In any event, I, I still feel like that, that five hundred is, I, I think that because it's some. Because it works well in a neighborhood like Marblehead, not to, you know, I'd say the same thing about, you know, I don't know, Nahont or Winter. You know, older, smaller towns where you have a lot of, you know, tightly, you know, you have a lot of densely settled. Smaller homes and areas that are more newly developed that have bigger lots, and, you know, you've gotta have the same regulations for everybody.
Yeah.
And that for them, it seems to work pretty well.
I hear you, I think for me that.
So, and that's, that's basically where I'm going with it, I mean.
We've, I, I, I still think that previously required a site plan approval is just. I, 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 Marissa, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the majority of houses, you'd never know.
Yeah, you'd never know, and so it would.
So I, I don't, I think having it in there to like, they'll, they'll go to town hall and they say, oh, well, we, have we had this? How could this be answered?
Right.
Accurately, so there's a part of me that maybe it says, like you were saying before. Exterior alteration or exterior expansion of a single or two-family residence that changes or alters the footprint of the residence. By more than.
Well, not just the footprint, so it'd be the footprint or massing of a residence by five hundred square feet or more.
Uh, that, I think, I like that.
Or could it say?
Not just the footprint, it's, so it's the massing as well, so what if it doesn't change the footprint and it just changes the massing?
Well, could you say a mass, uh. Could you give a footprint min- m- minimum and a, or maximum and a, a massing maximum?
No, I mean, I don't, I don't, but that's where we were at before, so I just think it's. Or I just, I think it's all gonna be relative and we're just gonna have to figure it out, because if it's really, if the footprint, you know, size. It's really gonna be determined by setbacks.
Could it, could we not just strike that, the, the entire first section of that and just say involves an addition of more than five hundred square feet? Cause whether or not it's a second-story addition or a lateral addition on the first story, as long as it's more than five hundred square feet, it's getting added.
Oh, that makes a good point, cause if you lose the footprint.
Yeah.
Right, footprint, it be, makes it.
I think it, yeah.
Adds too much meat there.
I think it makes, I think that makes perfect sense.
Just involves an addition.
So, construction, exterior alteration or exterior expansion of a single, two-family residence that exceeds, that, that, um. Exceeds five hundred square feet.
Yeah.
Gross square feet, however you wanna put it.
Okay.
They, we had square feet of gross floor area bef- before, so.
Yeah, I would say gross.
Whenever you guys, um, you know, whatever you guys feel is the best way to express that space, whether it's gross gra- you know, whatever, we were saying before.
I would say gro- I, at least, I know we define gross square feet in the definitions, so, I would say that's probably a safe bet.
By more than, yeah, by more than five hundred, I think that's.
So that's basically, you could put a twenty by twenty-foot room on your house without having a site plan. Or a ten by twenty, two-story addition. Or.
You can, and but if you have to, but if, if it's not, you know, if it, um. If you need relief, then you need relief, you know, then you're gonna have to go to zoning.
I just, I just wish that, you know, the, the thing that. So much is done.
Talking about.
Pardon me?
I, 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 I totally get what you're gonna say, but go ahead.
Well, I, I just wish that we were a community that had more design review, I, I mean, this is.
Yeah, I know.
There is so much that happens that you're like, oh, that's a shame that happened, and that's a shame that happened, and, you know, I don't think that it. It makes the community better. I don't think it makes the community, I don't think it, it helps people's property values. Um, we worry about people being, you know, a homeowner, being inconvenienced for a month. And their neighbor gets, you know, up, up until now, they could get a forty by forty-foot addition dropped in someone's yard. That altered the experience of living in their own house without anyone looking at it, I don't, I, I just, I don't think it's great.
Four-four unit building, you know, looming over your, looming over your bedroom, so I agree with you, but, you know, what are you gonna do?
Well, communities do things, I mean, there's, I, I've worked in communities in California that. If I wanted to alter the window on the back of a house that someone could see out their bathroom window and only them. I was, I was doing it correctly, it was matching the house, it had to, um, and it, it did protect, granted, these communities. Their property values are probably not what we would want here, cause no one could live here.
Yeah.
But, but everyone signed up to doing it and, you know, and they had.
So, this.
So, let's say, okay.
Do those changes that we just talked about, the, the amendments to the language in the residential additions, the five hundred square foot trigger, the changes to the. Language about the footprint that Marissa had just read off, are we all in agreement about that?
I would be at four hundred.
You're gonna keep saying that until you say, alright, ten feet, alright, ten square feet.
No, I was, I have two hundred written down, ten by ten is, ten by ten is a bedroom. It's not a mudroom, it's a bedroom.
At the end of the day, you know, I want, you know, to be careful about how much. I hear what you're saying, like, we need, we've all seen properties where things have happened that you're like, I would've done it differently if it came before planning board, I would've had this input. Totally, completely agree, I think we do have to have a longer-term conversation about things like maybe looking into form-based code for some. Point in the future, and looking at certain design guidelines and ways to do that, that can be done without being an impediment. Cause I think a lot of the time, some of these things we talk about, it's easy for us, cause it's like, they come back in a month, okay, they'll make a change, you can do it in a month. But on the other side of the coin, a month is. on the other side of the coin, a month is, you know, if you're a homeowner, a month can be an inconvenience is probably generous to describe things as, if you're trying to go through a project and you're trying to keep up with your financing and everything.
Right.
So, but I think it's part of a longer-term conversation that I would like to have, is figuring out how we can do both of those things at the same time, non-inconvenience people, but also at the same time, ensure that our review is backed by bylaws that allow us to be a little bit more thorough in review, allow us to review more projects, allow us to be more involved and thoughtful in design. I think form-based code will do that, and there's some other things I think we can look into doing, like, you know, buy rate builds for certain types of projects and everything, or designs. But with that being said, I say that, it's kinda independent of this, I don't think we're gonna solve those problems in this, changing this, I, I, I think if we.
So you're cool with two hundred then?
I'm cool with five hundred, yep. My recommendation is to stick with five hundred, to do the, eliminate the three thousand complete, uh, eliminate the three thousand square foot trigger completely for any new construction.
Yeah.
And I think five hundred is reasonable, um, for construction.
I think it is, as well.
If the board feels differently, I respect, you know.
How do you feel, Bill?
I'm good with five hundred.
I will, I will stand strong at a hundred.
It's shrinking.
Yeah, that's how, it's how, it's how I negotiate.
The one.
It's my tariff.
Incredible shrinking building.
That's your tariff. The, the one part that we haven't really talked about is the flood area overlay in any construction in a floodplain.
Yeah.
Yep, so I think that, I think where Marissa tucked that in at five, four, two, six is, is, is good.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's important that we, you know, that gets referred to because when, you know, and it should be, it should also go into, um, uh, you know, I'd love to see it into, uh, you know, zoning reviews as well in terms of, um, dimensional special permits and stuff like that, because I don't know that it's, you know, it's always, um, you know, they're looking at dimensional special permit, they're not looking at where that dimension is per se, unless it's glaringly obvious. So I think there's a, a piece that, you know, there that, that needs to happen ultimately, but at any rate, I believe it belongs there, but, um, so that would also involve renumbering the rest of the section, which I know you just didn't do, um, Marissa, because that was just one of the versions.
No, I, um, I renumbered the rest of it.
Did, version four?
But in, but it, it's not in redline.
Right, it's just not in redline.
Knocked out, right, so we need to do that. And then also flip to flip to the, um, page one oh nine under contents of the plan for commercial and residential.
Mm-hmm.
And under the five, four, five, eight, we have C, CFAOD. And then again in the residential, under five, four, six, two, it's letter E, we have CFAOD.
Oh, so.
Oh, I see what you mean.
They're not in, they're not in.
Yeah, just change it to L O D, that's all.
Yeah, yeah.
Didn't get changed.
But, but we can just do that through an administrative update, right?
Exactly, yeah, yep.
Yeah, we can just, you know, you can just stick it in there now, just cross it out and redline it.
Oh, totally, yeah, we, the only, I only printed out the first page, so that's all we have before us, like, just the actual, like, the beginning of five, four, zero, zero.
I pulled it out, yeah, it's in, it's on there.
This, um, this short-term rental de- description, is there one, um, that says thorough for the adult uses?
Oh, you. You know, Chair. He's getting punchy, right, so let's get to.
I just looked at it and I was like, is that?
That's funny. So if we're, so then on site plan special permit we're at five, four, two, two, residential addition, construction, exterior alteration or exterior expansion of a single or two-family residence that, in, let's see, uh, the two-family residence in excess of five hundred square feet.
Yeah.
By more than, sorry. Or, yeah, expansion by more than, sorry. Okay, so we got that, the next one is residential, is any new construction of a single or two-family residence, period. The next one is five, four, two, six, adding the flood area overlay.
Yep.
Renumbering the rest of the section, just, you know, knocking that out and redlining and then redlining the.
Oh, I'm sorry, keep going, I'm sorry.
Oh, and just redlining the stuff you don't have, you know, the, um, the, what, you know, stuff I mentioned before.
Yes.
Five, four, five, eight.
Where I input flood area overlay, that should be already all set, cause adult uses was already five, four, two, six, so I put so that should, that's already numbered accordingly.
I think it's just redlining the updates, the strikeouts.
Talking about.
Right.
This is about, um, the time, and this is about contents of plan.
Oh, I got you, I got you, okay.
It's under contents of plan, commercial and residential. And in both those sections, under contents of plan, it mentions discussion of CFAOD.
Got it.
Do you just wanna switch it?
Yes, to F O D, or F A.
Yeah, just get rid of that and put F O D, yeah, that's all.
Got you, thank you.
So do we have any motions that we wanna make to reflect that final language?
Um, is, I guess if everyone's good with it, I would make a motion to amend, um, the site plan special permit section five, four, zero, zero with the comments I just read to the board, which I'm happy to read again.
Could you, I think just the five, four, two, two section?
Okay, five, four, two, two section would read residential dash addition. Construction, comma, exterior alteration or exterior expansion of a single or two-family residence by more than five hundred square, gross square feet, or square, whatever you're gonna call it, gross square feet.
Okay.
Did you say two hundred?
I did not, I did not say two, I said five.
Respect the, uh.
And that's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
We'll get the two.
That's our fifer, uh, that's our final language, so Diane, if you can just kick that over to Diane tomorrow.
Yes, absolutely, Diane.
I know, they'll be happy to.
Right.
They'll be happy to get it.
Our public hearing is set in here, Monday, the twenty-eighth, so it's two weeks from today, same time, seven PM.
That's for all three?
What's that?
The public hearing is for all three.
Yep.
For all three, yep.
And then?
And then you're doing a forum, right?
I'm doing a forum, um, Wednesday night.
Great.
Yep.
Like.
Is it this coming Wednesday?
Yes.
This coming Wednesday, yep, in two days, and, um.
Doing it, is it in person or just online?
It's gonna be online, um, cause I, um, one, I, I don't have any space available. And two, I think it's a lot easier to just screen share and, and talk online, I think these are these changes are a lot smaller than what we did last year, so hopefully it should just be a pretty, um, a pretty quick thing.
It'll be good to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's great. Okay.
Do we have minutes to approve?
No, I apologize, I don't have any minutes.
Okay, no, I was, I thought I was going crazy, so, no, all good. Any other business the board wants to visit? I think we kinda covered a lot during our, the Hancock's thing, so.
Yeah, and thank you again for indulging me on that.
Thanks for bringing the, thanks for bringing the concerns up, I, um, know that we wouldn't, out of no one's fault, but the process wouldn't have included us beyond tonight, so this was our chance to be a little bit more involved and
Yeah.
that's the right thing.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, thanks, thank you again, so.
Yep. Any motions to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, first, second, okay, all those in favor? All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.